All right, good afternoon and welcome to the April Work Session of the Cobb County Board of Education. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Doyle, do we have any public speaker? We have one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one public speaker today.
All right. Two minutes?
Two minutes.
Or in this case, our one speaker, to observe the proper rules of decorum and avoid excluded topics of personnel, et cetera, under the Board's policy, BCBI. Your speaker today, Mr. Chair, is Tony Waybright, who will discuss IAS Charter and School Performance.
To answer a question about the email I previously sent, no, I did not forget Post Four. I looked hard. I tried to find a school with a low score or a large drop, and I just couldn't find one. So congratulations, Post Four. Based on the analysis presented by the state, utilized and attached to the staff recommendation, CCRPI scores, as imperfect as they may be, do in fact matter. And when used for comparison to other scores, differences as small as five tenths of a point still seem to matter. Those are the facts that have been presented. We understand that IAS has only outperformed the district average two out of five years. We understand IAS has never exceeded the mysteriously, automagically calculated beat-the-odds score. But to Smyrna and the surrounding neighborhoods, IAS has been a stabilizing factor for families that are considering buying and/or moving out of the area. If you were thinking of moving out of the Bell Zone when the Bell scored 49, then IAS looked like a fantastic option at 79. If you were living in the Belmont Hills Zone and you wanted to buy a house when Belmont Hills scored 53, then IAS looked like a fantastic option at 73. Today, even when IAS is at 57, it looks like it is 16 points, I'm sorry, seven points and 16% higher than Green Acres across the street. So it's still not a bad option if you're zoned for Green Acres. Looking forward, if a student is at IAS today at 57, what is accomplished if he or she is returned to their zone school that scores 49, 53, 54, or even the ones that score 59?
Thirty seconds.
This is particularly relevant when considering schools that are already overcrowded and what happens when we return students to those. Summing up, IAS beat the district average two of five years, missed the beat-the-odds four years, and scored 57 as recommended for closing. We look for the same kind of dramatic immediate action to help our other schools that are overcrowded and scoring low scores. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now...
And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention, I hope it was okay if I gave a little extra time, I want everyone to know I was the one who kicked the power switch, apparently, to the clock above, so my apologies.
Thank you for that disclosure, Counselor. Okay, and now, the Board's, Board members having had the opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meetings from March 22nd and March 23rd, without objection, the minutes stand approved. And now, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Agenda Item Number One is the recommendation, as always per month, for school properties disposal per District Administrative Rule DO-R, and that list has been sent to the Board electronically. Be happy to answer any questions.
Without objection, consent. Okay?
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Agenda Item Number Two is Recommendation to Affirm SPOSS Funds to Build New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School and Approve Recision of General Fund Balance Commitment for New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School in South Cobb. This Agenda Item, as everyone is aware, the Board identified funds to be set aside for the potential construction of a new school for Harmony Leland. Some of those funds were utilized to purchase the land for the site of the new school, but as the Board is aware, an architect was appointed. But during that appointment, the parameter was placed upon that, that unless SPOSS Five passed, no work could be done or paid for until SPOSS Five passed. With the passage of SPOSS Five, as previously stated, the architect is under contract. We do have that architect assigned, working on the design, and I have always affirmed that the New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School would be one of the first projects out of the gate, and we are working on that as we speak. So I can identify that Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School is going to be the first project coming out of the gate for SPOSS Five. We're striving to attain the goal of being able to break ground in January, February, and again, it's winter time, so weather does play a certain factor, but to be able to break ground January, February of 2019, which is the first month of SPOSS Five revenue proceeds coming into the district. So all of that being said, I'm asking the Board to affirm SPOSS funds to build the New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School and approve rescission of the general fund balance commitment back to the general fund. So basically, that money that's been in the set-aside account will be released, if the Board chooses to approve to do so, back to the general fund for us to be able to utilize through general fund expenditures, i.e. the budget that we will also discuss today as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Scamhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I stop talking, it's not because I'm angry, it's because my throat just gave up. So I do have a question, and maybe for the Parliamentarian or Attorney, Mr. Doyle. Since this money came out of our general fund when we originally set it aside, and we've used 1.8 million, I would like to entertain, if it's appropriate, to replace that 1.8 million to restore that 10 million. Is that a, would that be an issue? And I'll put that out to any fellow Board members also.
I'm not quite sure if I thought, but if it relates to a budget matter, I would generally say handle that during the budget process, but if it's isolated to this one, you could do that.
Mr. Sweeney?
If I could ask a point of clarification, is the member suggesting that we replace the money already expended on land with SPOSS funds to, so that we are basically restoring ultimately full $10 million to uncommitted, uncommitted funds?
What he said.
And again, the thing is, is that with the project for a brand-new school, my sense is, is that the cost of land for a brand-new school is an appropriate expenditure of SPOSS funds. So the answer, I mean, this is my thought anyways, is that that would be permissible, but it would be at some point in time, and candidly, we would not have those SPOSS funds for that school until revenues begin collection, which would be 2019.
If, and I'm okay with that, my intention is that we don't miss the appropriate opportunity to put it in with a, an agenda item or the recommendation for this agenda item, but if everybody's in agreement that we can restore it later, no problem.
I think if I can, and I'm going to ask Brad to either confirm or deny what I'm about to say, because the issue is, we do, for auditing purposes, we have to have the Board take action to rescind the commission of those funds out of the general fund. But I don't think there would be an issue if the Board decided to say, we want to attach to this agenda item, yes, we want to approve the rescission of these funds, and when appropriate, replace the 1.9, 1.8 million dollars out of SPOSS Five revenue to the general fund. And the reason I say it's when appropriate is, to Mr. Sweeney's point, we won't start collecting revenue until January of 2019, and we can wait to make sure that revenues are on projection and those kind of things, so that would fit into that when appropriate. But the Board could certainly, and Clay, I'm asking this as well, I would think, attach that to this recommendation to take action, that the Board is deciding to do that when appropriate.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe it would be appropriate, once we get to the night meeting tonight, for Mr. Scamhorn to make the amendment to the agenda item at that time. That would have it covered.
I think that's the better course of action, to stick with the work session where we talk through things and maybe not have the motions and amendments flying this afternoon so we can get through the meat of it, and it'll also give us a chance to take a look at the SPOSS aspects of it.
Thank you. What, okay, so, do, all right, I want to give Ms. Thayer, she had raised her hand earlier.
So are you saying that I should hold any other questions until tonight? No, go ahead and ask them now? Okay, because then when we're saying at an appropriate time, I know we've said Harmony Leland will be one of the first out of the chute, so to speak, but also, we have lots of schools that are overcrowded, and we've got to get help too immediately, because they're overcrowded today. So would we address that need before putting the money back into the general fund? Could we make that a stipulation of that also?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's what I was referring to, was when appropriate. I didn't want to jump the gun, because again, we're 18 months out from the first revenue being collected, give or take. But yes, to your point, and that's why I said, assuming revenues are on projection and that kind of thing, there is no time...
And we addressed the overcrowded...
Yeah, exactly. Right, absolutely.
Okay, good. And my second question was, when you said here, Recommendation to Affirm SPOSS Funds to Build, affirm, we don't have any funds yet, so what are we affirming?
So the reason, originally, we were using the term "commit" because we have committed to the community of Harmony Leland and Clay that that school's going to be one of the first projects. Unfortunately, auditors take exception to the word "commit" because it means different things to the auditors. So affirm is being used instead of commit, and basically, it's just saying, we are affirming that the first project is going to be Clay Harmony Leland School out of SPOSS Five, therefore, the Board recommends, or I'm asking the Board to rescind the commission of the general fund set-aside funds.
Right. I understand the general fund set-aside, but then we're also just affirming that we agree that Harmony Leland will be the first project.
Exactly.
It has nothing to do with monies at this point.
No, absolutely not.
Right.
But basically, it's a show to the community that we're not taking this money, and then, oh, we're going to decide not to build a school until, you know, 2022.
Okay.
We are affirming that it's going to be the first project coming out of the gate for SPOSS Five, and that allows us to rescind that commission.
Great. Thank you.
Discussion item.
Sure.
All right, okay, next.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Agenda Item Number Three is dealing with the renewal extension petition for the International Academy of Smyrna. I'm going to have predominantly Executive Cabinet make this presentation. I would also ask that, because it is a lengthy presentation, if Board members could hold their questions until the end, and we're going to have, like I said, multiple Executive Cabinet members, so I would ask you to jot down your question when you think of it, and also jot down who is presenting during the time you wanted to ask the question. That'll help us refer back in case we need to get to slides or those kind of things.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Superintendent, would it be better for you to move this Agenda Item to the last Agenda Item?
I don't think so.
Okay. You know, the flow would might be a little easier, but...
Right, right. It's going to be a lengthy presentation, so...
That's what I mean, so, you know, it might be to your advantage to go, move it to the end.
Okay, so we can go on to Agenda Item Number Four, but I would also remind the Board that in Superintendent's report, we have the budget presentation as well, so that will take considerable amount of time as well. So without objection, Mr. Chair, you wanted to go to Agenda Item Number Four?
Okay, so we're going to go to Four and put Three at the bottom after Agenda Item Eleven, is that what we're saying?
I suppose that's the plan.
Okay, and then we'll plan on having a break, I guess, after...
Yeah, we'll take a break before Agenda Item Number Three.
Okay, let me know if you...
All right, so John, if you want to come on and bring the, I believe he's going to bring Items Four through Eleven.
Yes, sir, thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, Recommendation to Approve a Board Resolution to Rescind a Portion of the Modifications of the Hayes Elementary School Facility from the Previously Submitted FY 2017 State Capital Outlay Appreciation, Application, pardon me. The short version of this is that we are not having to replace a kitchen exhaust hood that we initially thought we would have to replace. We're actually going to be saving about $55,000 by not having to replace that serviceable hood. However, we have to modify our previous capital outlay application, and thus, because of the $55,000 savings, reduce our application by the amount you see listed there under the cost, $15,972. So we're saving 55, but have to amend our application to get back 15,972 less. And this amendment is required by the State Department of Education, and we're recommending that you approve this amendment of our application.
Any questions? Consent, all right, next.
Agenda Item Number Five, Recommendation for Approval of an Easement for Cobb EMC at Mountain View Elementary School, the replacement school. You may recall, we previously had moved some power poles pursuant to a DOT requested easement. This is a follow-up to that for Cobb EMC, so that we can do some underground work. They're requesting the easement to provide electricity to the school site, in this case, underground, and we're recommending that you approve this easement at this time.
Consent. We have a question for Mr. Sweeney.
Considering it's underground, I imagine this is a permanent easement, so do you typically reference just easement if it's permanent and temporary only if it's temporary?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Still consent? All right, next.
Agenda Item Number Six, Recommendation for Approval to Award a Contract for Roof Replacement at Dodge and Middle School, and this is going to be the first in a series of five roof replacement items. And before we get into the details of each five, let me just give you some summary data. When you add up all these five items together, you're going to see a total SPOSS Four planning estimate of right at $6.4 million. You're going to see a total architect cost estimate of $8.5 million, but you're only going to see a total award cost of about $6.4 million. So looking at them together in aggregate, we're coming in with the total awards right at the SPOSS Four planning estimates. As you're aware, those are not budgets, those are planning estimates made in 2012, but nonetheless, letting you know that the awards are coming in together at what the 2012 estimates were, and 25% below the sum of the architect estimates. So this one in specific, Roof Replacement at Dodge and Middle School. Of course, in accordance with SPOSS Four, Dodge and is scheduled to receive a roof replacement. You have the attached facility summary. We did get two bids for this, 2.08 million and 2.14 million dollars. We're recommending the contract for this roof replacement be awarded to Tecta America Southeast out of Coming, in the amount you see there, 2.083 million dollars for the low bid. That is, of course, 18% below the architect estimate, and we're recommending that you award the contract at this time to allow us to perform the work over the summer with a completion, substantial completion date of August 2017.
Discussion?
Agenda Item Number Seven, Recommendation for Approval to Award a Contract for Roof Replacement at this time at Green Acres. We got four bids, received four bids on this project, ranging from $668,000 to $884,000. That is over the planning estimate from SPOSS Four, which again, was an estimate. The reason for that being over is that the original planning estimate assumed a much smaller roof area to be replaced, and we're having to replace a much larger size of the roof. So we're recommending that you approve this contract to DW Caldwell out of Douglasville, Georgia, at the cost you see listed there, $668,560. That is 27% below the architect estimate and the lowest of our bids, and we're, again, substantial completion date of July 2017 in this case.
Also for discussion? Any questions? Okay.
Item Number Eight, Recommendation for Approval to Award a Contract for Roof Replacement at this time at Hayes. Similarly, three proposals in this case, bids ranging from 1.075 to 1.32 million dollars. Architect estimate 1.488. We're recommending you award the contract to DW Caldwell out of Douglasville. Cost to be 1.075, 892. You see listed there, 1.05 million and some change, 28% below the architect estimate, and once again, award at this time, substantial completion date of July 2017.
Any questions? Discussion Agenda.
Number Nine, again, a roof, roof replacement at this time at Cheatham Hill Elementary School. Also SPOSS Four, three proposals, bids ranging from 1.154 to 1.49 million. We're recommending it be awarded to the low bid, 1.154 million, and some additional dollars there, 1.154116, to DW Caldwell out of Douglasville, 27% below the architect estimate. It is above the planning estimate from 2012 because we are having to replace a much larger number of square feet than we initially thought. We initially thought this was going to be a fraction of the replacement, and it's just simply a larger job than thought in 2012.
Ms. Thayer?
Just a, just a general question, Mr. Adams, Green Acres was significantly lower than many of these others. Is that because it has a smaller footprint than these other schools?
Green Acres, it was initially thought that the re-roofing for Green Acres would be at about the 55,000 square foot range, and it's now coming in at about the 91,000 square foot range.
But I mean, for its total roof replacement is significantly lower than most of these, so is it still smaller than these?
It is. Even with the adjustment up to 90, it is a smaller roof, yes, ma'am.
That's the only difference in this, is that there's...
Yes, and one of these, there's also some additional cost because there've been some additional things added to the roof, but that's the bulk of it.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, add to the discussion?
And then, Number Ten, again, another roof, this time at McCleskey Middle School, replacement at McCleskey, also SPOSS Four, four proposals in this case, bids ranging 1.43 million to 2.0 million. We're recommending you go with the lowest bid, 1.43 million is listed in the cost below, in this case, to Superior Roofing Systems out of Lilburn. That is about 29% below the architect estimate of $2 million, and even below the planning estimate as well, so a good news story here, and awarded at this time will allow us to be on schedule, substantial completion date, August 2017.
Mr. Scamhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I held this question till the last because it's a general question. Are all of these going to have a start date as soon as the school's out, and are they all going to be completed before school starts? And is there any one of them that may be questionable, where they get done before school starts?
Yes, yes, and we don't think so. As is always the goal, we try to get these things started as soon as possible, if possible during post-planning, but if not, immediately after the teachers leave, get the work done in the summer and have it done in time, ideally, prior to the teachers coming back, but certainly before the students come back so as to minimize disruption. We think that these firms working with us and are keeping their feet to the fire over the summer and aggressively pursuing them, and if they can maintain the ongoing checkpoints that we have in mind, then we think that we can get it done. But we'll do our best to keep their feet to the fire and hopefully get that done on time.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll add this to the discussion. All right.
And then Agenda Item Eleven, slightly different, Recommendation for Approval to Award a Contract for Fire Sprinkler Installation at King Springs K1 at Brown, and Fire Alarm and Sprinkler Installation at Haven at Skyview. This is essentially not only a replacement of the older existing sprinklers, but as you can see from the summary sheet, we're also adding sprinklers, fire suppression, to the currently unsprinkled portions, unsprinkled portions of the buildings, and doing some ceiling replacements while we're at it, and then also at Skyview, doing some fire alarm system replacements. So this is replacement, expansion, and improvements. We're doing this because we think that we need to maximize student safety in these buildings, and we're erring on the side of caution. While it may not be specifically required by code, we're going to always err on the side of caution in terms of student safety. Two bids in this case, 1.105 and 1.199. We're recommending you award it in the amount of 1.105, the lower of the two bids, to Sherak Contracting out of Mabelton, Georgia. That is above the planning estimate for the reasons I've explained, but is below the architect estimate of 1.171 million dollars. This is budgeted in SPOSS Three, and allowing us to proceed will again make this a summer project, substantial completion date of July 2017.
Ms. Thayer?
This is an aside, Mr. Adams, but can you give us a rough update on Osborne High School? Where it is? I know we, the architects completed the drawings, so where do we stand on that?
We think that we'll bring the initial bids, RFPs, to you starting in June, and get on track with that as soon as possible.
So when would they be able to, so they will not start construction this summer, then?
Let me check on that and see. We intend to bring you the first bids as early as June. We'll do, we count over the summer, but let me get a more exact answer for you.
Okay.
With June beginning.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Skyview, is it 100% used for Haven, or do we have some administrative offices there also?
I think it's just used all for Haven down there, and most of the stuff that, of the personnel who used to be for professional learning and other areas are now at the former Hawthorne building.
Didn't we move some of Martha J. Moore down there when we closed Martha J. Moore?
Some, yes.
But that's gone.
Martha J., well, Martha J. Moore is not occupied.
That's been reassigned then.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I thought I was right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this will go for the discussion agenda. All right, next. And let's go move forward.
All right, back to Agenda Item Number Three. Again, we're going to have, so back to my ask of the Board, if you will, if you can hold... hold your questions, but jot them down and make a note of who's speaking during the presentation so we can go back and be able to access slides if we need to, to answer any questions that you might have. So we're going to start out, Dr. Davis is kind of going to get us started on basically an overview of the charter and the legislation and how that relates, and then we will move from there. Dr. Davis.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent. Today, the Executive Cabinet has prepared information for you related to the request for renewal or extension by the charter petitioner, the International Academy of Smyrna. The International Academy of Smyrna, or IAS, has been in existence since 2012 when it was approved by the Cobb County School Board to operate in Cobb County as a locally board-approved charter school. Prior to this time, the International Academy of Smyrna had been operating under a previously approved charter with the Cobb County Board of Education. Today, however, IAS serves just over 1,000 students in grades K through 8 with a focus on the International Baccalaureate Program. IAS has been operating under a charter contract with the CCSD Board of Education for the past five years, from school year 2012-2013 through to school year 2016-17. The current charter contract is set to expire on June 30th of 2017. In August of 2016, IAS submitted a renewal petition to the Cobb County School District that sets out the terms of their charter and requests that the CCSD Board of Education approve them to operate for the coming five years, from school year 2017-18 to school year 2021-22. For clarification purposes of this presentation, IAS is referred to as the charter petitioner or the charter school operator, and the CCSD Board of Education is referred to as the authorizer. The terms of a charter arrangement are established in what is commonly referred to as the Charter Schools Act of 1998, found in OCGA 20-2-2060 through 20-2-2071. As defined in Georgia statute, the intent of the General Assembly to increase student achievement through academic and organizational innovation by encouraging local school systems to utilize the flexibility of a performance-based contract called a charter. The underpinning belief in the state of Georgia is that with greater flexibility from the law and local board rules, charter schools can outperform and outpace their like schools in student achievement. According to OCGA 20-2-2062, a charter is a performance-based contract. It is a legally binding contract and with both entities are expected to fulfill the commitments in the charter terms. Further guidance regarding the relationship between a charter school and the local authorizer are found in State Board of Education rules. In particular, among many outlining responsibilities of local authorizers, State Board of Education Rule 160-4-9-06 outlines the local authorizer's requirement to enforce clear expectations for and ensure academic achievement of the performance goals set forth in the charter. Another requirement of local authorizers, as outlined in this State Board rule, is that the local authorizer is to ensure that local charter schools are fiscally sound and operating in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards, including annually reviewing budgets and reviewing working papers as needed. The third requirement I would like to point our attention to is found also in State Board of Education Rule 160-4-9-06, and that is the local authorizer's requirement to allow local charter schools to exercise substantial autonomy over decisions affecting the school. According to the Department of Education, a charter school is a public school. It's a choice school that operates under the terms of a contract with an authorizer. In this case, the authorizer is the Cobb County School District Board of Education. Charter schools receive flexibility from certain state and local rules in exchange for a higher degree of accountability for raising student achievement. Charter schools are held accountable by their authorizer for upholding the terms of their charter contract. According to the Department of Education, there are two words that help us distinguish charter schools from traditional schools, and that is autonomy and flexibility. Charter schools are not governed by the local board of education, but by an autonomous nonprofit board of directors, and they receive flexibility from certain state and local rules and regulations in exchange for that higher degree of accountability. Also, according to the Department of Education, charter schools are held accountable for academic results through their charter contract with the authorizer. The contract stipulates certain academic performance goals that the school must meet in order to fulfill the terms of its charter. Today, Mr. Chair and members of the board, we are reviewing the request for renewal or extension of the International Academy of Smyrna. In evaluating the capacity of the International Academy of Smyrna to meet the conditions of their proposed five-year renewal petition for the school years of 2017-18 through to the school year of 2021-22, or the subsequent request for a one- or two-year extension, we will review their progress toward meeting the agreed-upon contract goals established in the 2012-2017 charter contract. Goal number one, as identified in this submitted and approved-upon charter contract for the 2012-2013 to 2016-2017 years, stated that IAS will make adequate yearly progress and demonstrate increasing student performance. For the last five years, IAS has been operating under this agreed-upon goal. However, it is worth noting that over the terms of the contract, the state of Georgia has changed its statewide accountability system from AYP to CCRPI, and its statewide assessment system from CRCT to milestones or end-of-grade tests. Despite IAS never submitting an amendment to their contract when changes to these systems were made, we will make a transition from the former system to the current system for the purpose of this review and discussion. In measure number one of this academic goal, IAS demonstrated success for the first two years of its charter term. However, they had committed to making annual improvements by 2.5%, and there will be a subsequent slide demonstrating IAS's inability to meet that objective in the most recent three years. Measure number two will also be demonstrated on a subsequent slide that each annual year was not met. Measure three indicates that in year one of the charter term, 80% of students will perform at the meets or exceeds level in science, and increase that performance by 5% each year until 100% is achieved. This academic goal identified by the International Academy of Smyrna as their commitment to performance has not been met. Measure four, stated by the International Academy of Smyrna, is a commitment that IAS will perform at or above the district or state average, whichever is higher, on the state assessments. IAS was successful in the first two years of their contract, but in the most recent three years has failed to meet this obligation. Measure five was that IAS students would 100% pass the Georgia Writing Assessment. This metric was not met in the first two years of the contract, and the writing assessment is no longer administered by the state of Georgia. Their academic goal number two, as stated in the agreed-upon contract between IAS and the Cobb County Local Board of Education, is that each year the charter school will exhibit growth on a national norm reference test. Specifically cited is that in year one, all eligible students will perform at the 89th percentile on Iowa. Records show, as reported by leadership at IAS, that in fifth grade, there has been a range of 51 to 56 percentile achieved in reading, and in seventh grade, a 52 to 57th percentile achievement in reading. Measure two of this goal, as stated by IAS, is that in year two, all students will score in the 92nd percentile on Iowa, and with students scoring in the 100th percentile for the remaining years of the charter term. As I reported on the previous slide, IAS has reported not exceeding the 57th percentile for performance in reading. Academic goal number three is that students will score in the 95th percentile on the G-Kids Assessment. While progress has been made in the five years of the contract term on the G-Kids Assessment, the 95th percentile has never been achieved. In addition to academic goals outlined in the agreed-upon contract charter between IAS and the CCSD Board of Education, there are organizational goals stated by IAS. Organizational goal number one is that students will demonstrate a commitment to learning as measured by attendance and promotion. The first goal is that a percentage of students absent 15 days or more shall not exceed 10%. IAS has successfully met this goal for each year of the contract term. The second measure under that goal, IAS committed to maintaining a daily attendance rate of 95% or higher each year. IAS has successfully met this contract term for each of the five years. And measure three is that the average promotion rate would be 85% or higher. Again, IAS has met this particular goal. Organizational goal number two is that IAS will minimize school attrition and maintain a sustainable enrollment size. IAS has committed to not exceeding 15% attrition in any year. IAS has again met this particular objective. In particular, they show one of the lowest transiency rates for our district, coming in at about 7% of transition happening among their students. Organizational goal number three is that parents will have a high degree of satisfaction with communication from the school. According to the required school climate survey results, in the most recent year, the school performed at 79.4% on communication topics. Measure two of this organizational goal, IAS committed that 90% of parents will be satisfied with the quality of education. While early years of the contract term do suggest parent satisfaction meeting that each-year expectation, the most recent results have been on a consistent decline, with 2016 survey results being 88.2% satisfied with their child's education. Again, this is with according to the required state-administered school climate survey. Organizational goal number four is that faculty will demonstrate a commitment to professional growth. We do not have records in order to verify the participation of teachers in setting their own goals, nor in teachers attending conferences as outlined by their goals. In their measure three of this goal, they commit to every teacher participating in peer evaluations. This is data that has not been reported at this time. Organizational goal number five is that IAS will be economically sustainable. Measure one of that goal suggests that each year, IAS has committed publicly in this contract that they will operate in a fiscally sound manner as measured by an external audit. Brad Johnson will be commenting with additional clarification regarding the conditions in which this has not been reported. Measure two is that actual and proposed budgets for each school year will demonstrate effective allocation of resources. I ask you to hold your questions when Brad Johnson provides you information pertaining to the inability of IAS to meet this goal. And finally, measure three is that yearly balance sheets will demonstrate that IAS maintains adequate cash reserves. IAS has not met this goal. Brad Johnson will be providing additional information regarding IAS's performance in this area. And measure four, IAS will meet all generally accepted accounting practices as demonstrated by an external annual audit report. Yes, there was an external audit, however, Brad Johnson will clarify the conditions under which this was met. As you can see in summary, IAS did not meet any of the academic goals for their past charter term. They have successfully met four goals, all of which pertain to students' attendance and staying in school. It demonstrates that there has been limited transiency rates for this particular school and that students are attending on a regular basis. That concludes that the IAS charter contract goals have been met four out of 21. As a reminder, it is directed through Georgia law that the intent of a charter contract is to increase student achievement through innovation, and it is the role of the charter authorizer to evaluate the capacity of a charter to accomplish their mission. Further defining the expected relationship of a charter school and the local school authorizer is articulated in State Board rules. Among the many responsibilities, one is to enforce clear expectations for and ensure achievement of performance goals set forth in the charters. Before I conclude this opening section of today's discussion, I want to provide the board some context related to the operating relationship between the Cobb County School District and the leadership of IAS. While a charter school is, by design, intended to function with autonomy from the local board of education and district, and local authorizers are directed through State Board rule to maximize that autonomy, CCSD has a longstanding tradition of supporting and coordinating with charter schools. A charter petition is written to provide evidence of the charter school's capability to achieve even greater results when operating independently from the policies, rules, and processes of the state and the authorizer. However, over the course of this charter term, I want to give confidence to our board that the CCSD leadership team has provided both the leadership team of IAS and the staff of IAS access to lesson plans, assessment resources, professional learning, including the participation of many IAS staff members in Cobb County-funded endorsement programs. There has been an inclusion of the IAS leadership team on all CCSD academic communications, including advertisements for every academic event like science fair, STEM programs, art programs, RTI resources, digital teaching tips, professional learning, professional journals, and examples of model classrooms. At no cost to IAS, they have been invited to all professional learning events. They have been invited, and they do attend the CCSD testing coordinator meetings and have access to all of the assessment-related materials. They have been invited, however, neglected to attend any special education training provided at no cost for all matters pertaining to special education. They've received extensive support from our CCSD Special Education Leadership Team in mediation's IEP meetings upon request. There has been support from the CCSD leadership team in gifted services, speech-language pathology, occupational therapy, and school counseling, including loaning assessment tools when necessary and when requested. And despite there being limited CCSD resources, IAS has been invited to send a team of participants to be trained on positive behavior intervention supports. IAS did not attend. Invitations to all district leadership meetings, including all of the superintendent's leadership and learning meetings, have been included for IAS leadership team. And due to the creation of VPN accounts for all IAS employees, the IAS leadership team and teachers have access to all CCSD employee resources. For example, IAS staff have access to a full collection of mathematics and English language arch benchmark assessments on the CCSD Intranet to support their student progress monitoring efforts in preparation for state assessments. At this time, I will remind you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, that we actually are here to consider the renewal petition or extension request of the Smyrna IAS charter. I transition at this time to articulating what has been submitted in the charter narrative for the International Academy of Smyrna in August of 2016 and in preparation for the upcoming five years. The IAS renewal petition goals are outlined on the screen in front of you. Obviously, the IAS renewal charter has scaled back their commitment to providing a higher-performing school environment and removed the commitment to outperforming the district on state measures. IAS has only identified goals for this current school year that we are in, which is under the current charter contract. IAS has failed to identify their goals for advancing achievement during the years of this renewal request. Goal number one is that IAS will beat the odds this year. Beating the odds is a predicted range of performance within a school score that is statistically expected based on the demographics of that school. In a letter from Janelle Cornwall of the Department of Education, there has been a degree of concern over the capability of IAS degree of concern over the capability of IAS to beat the odds. In particular, according to Janelle Cornwall, for the past five consecutive years, IAS has failed to beat the odds. There has been some questions regarding the accuracy of the data used for this calculation, so we spent a considerable amount of time reviewing this matter with Lou Ersti, also at the Department of Education. Mr. Ersti was able to provide an official opinion for us after the letter of concern had been articulated from the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. The Governor's Office of Student Achievement stated, and I quote, "For the free and reduced lunch model, it would not be enough to make the difference because the gap between their actual and their projected score is so large. If the model were rerun, the numbers may change slightly on beat the odds, but not enough to make up the remaining difference to successfully beat the odds," end quote. Additionally, in subsequent sections of our discussion today, you will see trending performance that relates to goal number two, the commitment of IAS to demonstrate proficiency or improvement on the CCRPI. It is important to note that throughout the language of the narrative related to the charter petition submitted by IAS, there is no evidence of a significant change to the instructional model designed to deliver instruction or to structure the learning any differently than in the last charter petition. Therefore, there is no evidence of adjusting in a way that will redirect the trajectory of performance. A charter contract is a performance contract, a commitment of the charter petitioner to achieve higher rates of performance in exchange for autonomy from the local school district. These particular goals outlined for the upcoming five years in no way represent the state of Georgia's purpose for charter schools. These goals instead represent the bare minimum of acceptable outcomes and does not warrant the autonomy to operate with blanket flexibility from local and state rules. At this time, I transition this discussion to Deputy Superintendent Alice Stoudt for a deeper examination of performance trends.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, and Superintendent Ragsdale. As a reminder, the CCRPI, or College and Career Ready Performance Index, is a score given to every public school and system in Georgia. The CCRPI score uses a hundred-point scale with the possibility of earning an additional 10 bonus for challenge points. One of the useful features of CCRPI is that it can be calculated just for elementary students or just for middle school students. So in this presentation, I will compare the elementary students of IAS to those in the district and in the state. Likewise, we, we will compare the middle school students at IAS to those in the district and in the state. CCRPI scores for IAS elementary students have decreased each consecutive year of the current contract. In 2016, their elementary CCRPI score dropped more than 14 points to 55.7, well below both the district and the state. The CCRPI score for International Academy of Smyrna middle school students has been below the district and the state for the duration of their current contract. Similar to the elementary CCRPI score at IAS, the 2016 middle school CCRPI score was significantly below both the district and the state, and the trend in scores is opposite the district and state. In the November annual report, charter schools were also evaluated on how each grade and subject performs on the milestones. At this time, let me introduce Dr. Isan Khatula, Assistant Superintendent of Accountability Division, and he will be assisting me with the remainder of this presentation.
Good afternoon. These tables represent whether or not IAS met the expected performance targets on the milestones for each subject and grade. Remember that the Georgia milestones were first given in the 2014-2015 school year. This slide presents the information for the elementary school grades. Charter schools are expected to exceed the state target and the district performance for each grade and subject. If IAS exceeded state or district target, then the background color is green. If they fail to meet the target, then the background in the table is colored red. In order to meet the state charter school target, the entire row must be green. For the 2014-15 school year shown in the left table, IAS met the target in English Language Arts in third and fourth grade. They also met the target in third-grade Science and third-grade Social Studies. So, in 2014-15 school year, they met four of the 12 targets in elementary school. The table on the right shows the milestone results for 2015-16 school year. Consistent with the CCRPI results, their performances worsened from 2015 to 2016. As a matter of fact, IAS elementary students met none of the targets on the milestones in 2015-16, as represented by the table on the right. One reason why they didn't meet any of the targets is because their ELA and Math Georgia milestones dropped from 2014-15 to 2015-16 school year. These tables represent milestone targets for middle school. In 2015 and 2016, IAS met one of the 12 targets. Similar to elementary school students, IAS middle school performed significantly below the state expectations. Another accountability measure that is not part of their contract but included in the CCRPI reports from the GADOE is the school climate star rating. All public schools are given a school climate rating from one to five stars. The rating is based on four pillars: survey from students, staff, and parents; student discipline; safe and substance-free learning environment; attendance of students and staff. Their climate rating was five stars in 2014, but dropped to one star in 2014-15 and two stars in 2015-16. To get a sense of how the climate ratings at IAS relates to CCSD schools, we compared the number of stars to the district home schools of IAS students. The home school is the district school that an IAS student would attend based on their home address. As a comparison, in 2015-16 school year, 91% of the home schools of current IAS students have three or more stars. To get a better idea of how the CCSD home schools that serve IAS students perform on the CCRPI, this graph shows the 2016 CCRPI score of each of the CCSD home schools and how it compares to IAS. The graph shows 90% of the CCSD home school had a higher CCRPI score in 2015-16 than IAS. The red line on the graph represents the IAS K8 CCRPI score of 57.5. The shaded region to the right of the red line represents the 90% of the CCSD home schools with higher CCRPI scores. Another way to evaluate IAS academic performance is to compare them to CCSD schools with similar student characteristics, such as free and reduced lunch. For each year, a group of eight elementary schools in CCSD was selected because their free and reduced lunch percentages was closest to percentages at IAS in that year. We then calculated the average CCRPI score for these eight schools for each year and compared the average score to the IAS. In 2013 school year, IAS was 4.4 points higher than the average of the similar schools. In subsequent years, IAS performance worsened and trended down compared to the similar schools. In 2015-16, the shaded area on the bottom, IAS performed 17.1 points lower than the schools with similar percentages of free and reduced lunch.
At this time, that concludes our presentation.
All right, so, as you can see, what we have done is presented you with empirical data that we have formulated and compiled. But the next phase of this presentation, we want to take the opportunity, as there have been some recent communications where questions and concerns have come up regarding the academic performance and, most, most recently, finances of the International Academy of Smyrna. So I'm going to ask each member of Executive Cabinet to respond and address these specific questions and/or concerns. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. In recent assertions, there have been concerns expressed about the cooperation of CCSD in regards to the Student Learning Objectives, or SLOs. These assertions are just not true. Specifically, SLOs are required as part of the teacher evaluation instrument. And years ago, when the beginning, the creation and development of SLOs was charged each CCS, each LEA across the state, CCSD extended a personal invitation to the leadership of IAS, specifically inviting IAS to contribute to the development process and inviting staff to be a part of, of developing SLOs. Since then, IAS staff have not chosen to accept that invitation and participate in the development of SLOs. Since requiring SLOs to be administered in all non-tested subjects, Cobb County School District has actually proceeded to compile all SLOs and provide them at no charge to our IAS charter school. If you could just give me a moment, I would like to share with you an example of those This right here represents the annual hand-delivered set of SLOs provided digitally when hand-delivered that is given at no cost to our IAS charter school. This is a tremendous amount of development work, exceptionally high-quality assessments, and the exact same ones administered in all of our Cobb County schools. In the most recent year, Cobb County has proceeded to implement an alternative to the SLO through the reading inventory and the mathematics inventory. In recent assertions, IAS claims to have not had the privilege of participating in that transition. This again is not true. Members of our team spent considerable amount of time providing negotiated prices for licenses for our IAS charter school so that they could benefit from the large volume of licenses being purchased by a large district such as Cobb County. While that negotiated price was offered to the leadership team at the International Academy of Smyrna, it was declined. As a result, we, the Cobb County School District, have continued to provide a complete set of SLOs so that there was no loss in resources for that particular school. Additionally, I would like to mention that in order to support the assessment processes at the International Academy of Smyrna, our team has provided a complete set of Intranet resources. I'm holding up in front of you just one screenshot of all of the different benchmark assessments that would be provided at the fingertips of a staff member at the International Academy of Smyrna, available on the CCSD Intranet. Additionally, assessment is a very complex topic, and we have provided support consistently to the testing coordinator by including them in all trainings provided by CCSD in order to administer state assessments. Accusation, as assertions also include our involvement in supporting special education services. Special education services are in the charter terms as being fully provided by the charter school. That being said, as a cooperative partner, we have provided extensive opportunity to attend any training for special education, this representing all of the different agendas that have happened over the recent years of any training that the personnel at IAS have been invited to attend. They have not accepted that invitation. I also would like to confirm that our Assistant Director of Special Education has participated upon request with any, any mediation or IEP that was challenging to develop and has spent copious amounts of time sitting in IEP meetings for students at IAS. Finally, there were assertions that we have failed to provide occupational therapy or speech-language pathology services, and this is just not true. There is no documented request for occupational therapy support, and the only support provided in speech-language pathology has been in-kind support to aid in the services needing to be specifically designed. I also want to make sure I provide for you examples of all of the superintendent's meetings that the leadership team of IAS is invited to attend. These have all the agendas and have specific detailed indications of the kind of work that we have included the IAS leadership team to be a part of. I also want to make sure, since assertion suggests that there is less than cooperation between CCSD Academic Division and IAS, that these are all of the communications in just the last two years, not to mention all those prior, that include all of the leadership team at IAS receiving every bit of information about academic support materials. And finally, all professional learning that is communicated through our professional learning catalog is provided to the staff at IAS for their participation at no charge. At this time, I would like to ask my colleague to continue this conversation regarding recent assertions with our relationship.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth. To continue, IAS asserts that none of its instructional staff could access or benefit from the statewide longitudinal data system and that its focus on areas of improvement would have been greatly supported with the school-wide access of this tool, referring to statewide longitudinal data system and Georgia Online Formative Assessment Resource known as GOFA. So I will continue by referring to these as SLDS and GOFA. IAS did, in fact, have access. Immediately upon request by IAS through the Office of Accountability, access was granted when the Office of Technology Services created guest accounts and virtual private network accounts for IAS staff. Technology Services prepared the first mass upload of IAS staff for SLDS on August the 7th, 2015. Since August 7th, 2015, new IAS teachers have been given access to SLDS through a manual process using Security Manager. IAS also had access to the predecessor of GOFA, the online assessment system known as OAS, until June 5th, June 30th, 2015, and then access to GOFA through SLDS beginning August of 2015. The only break in this access was when the Georgia DOE was in transition during those summer months. With that being said, according to a summary report from the state, there were only six IAS teachers that accessed SLDS between August 7th, 2015, and May 31st, 2016, and three IAS teachers that accessed GOFA between August 7th, 2015, and May 31st, 2016. Even after Even after continued decline in CCRPI, the state summary report shows only 12 IAS teachers have accessed SLDS and only 13 IAS teachers have accessed GOFA for the school year 2016-17. IAS user accounts were also created for the Cobb Teaching and Learning System for the 2015-16 school year. There were six teachers that accessed CTLS website during the 15-16 school year and five teachers that accessed the site for the 16-17 school year. The Pascaso website, which is a predecessor to the Cobb Teaching and Learning System, was brought online for the 2013-14 school year. Major instructional guidelines, unit plans, curriculum maps, parent letters, and other course-related documents were available to teachers, staff, and other users. There were seven IAS teachers that accessed Pascaso from the time that it was brought online to date. I will close with this. The guest numbers and the virtual private network accounts that Technology Services created for IAS allowed the IAS staff to access Synergy, CCSD Portal, which includes the Cobb Student Information System, the State Longitudinal Data System, Response to Intervention, Individual Growth Plans, the Cobb Teaching and Learning System, and all Intranet-supporting resources. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to John.
Good afternoon again. I don't know what it means that Brad and I are last, but brevity being the soul of wit, I'll try to be quick. I want to talk a little bit about some concerns involving probably the most important thing in any school, and that's its people. But first, I need to do a bit of a discussion about some questions that have been raised regarding CPI reporting errors, specifically CPI reporting errors that were made by IAS. The very short version is that IAS is blaming CCSD for IAS's mistakes in their CPI report. Ultimately, IAS is responsible for the correct coding of their staff on the CPI report. Now let me explain just briefly what the CPI report is. It's really the CCPI report, but it stands for Certified and Classified Personnel Information Report. This is essentially the report that all districts submit to the state three times a year. The big event really is in October, and it allows the state to reimburse the districts and with that, the charter schools that report through us, for teachers, for their staff, for their training experience, et cetera. It's a big deal. Cobb acts as a pass-through agent and merely transmits the data submitted for IAS, by IAS, to the state. We are not responsible for their coding of their staff. They code their staff, they send it to us, we send it in as a pass-through. To actually quote from the Georgia Department of Education's Financial Management of Georgia Local Units Manual, in the section on charter schools and data reporting, they specifically say, quote, "In order for charter schools to receive an accurate and appropriate amount of state and local monies, it is essential that they follow all data reporting guidelines. Local charter schools should report through their local Board of Education in ensuring that all data collections guidelines are followed." So it is essential that they, the charter schools, accurately report through the local board, in this case, the district. So any errors in the CPI coding of IAS staff were made by the IAS leadership and were then submitted by IAS to CCSD. Now, IAS was provided training by both the state and Cobb regarding the correct completion of the CPI report, their section of the CPI report. And IAS was also offered a significant amount of ongoing support from Cobb during these annual processes. This is an example of the emails between CCSD Human Resources and IAS regarding CPI. Even though it wasn't Cobb's job, we did provide as much assistance as we could. In spite of these ongoing training, this ongoing training support, IAS repeatedly failed to correctly code their staff and thus failed to maximize the TNE funding that could be received from the state. Similarly, errors made by IAS also resulted in IAS failing to maximize its healthcare reimbursement from the state. Once again, any CPI coding errors were first made by IAS and then later corrected by CCSD, ultimately only increasing the funding available to IAS through the efforts of CCSD. It should also be noted that sometimes on occasion, IAS submitted their incorrect data at essentially the last minute and then was unavailable by phone to assist us in any last-minute correction efforts. In any event, even if IAS had not made repeated errors in their CPI coding, it's not likely that the increase in funding that could have resulted would have remedied IAS's poor academic performance. Now let's talk specifically about some HR metrics, people being the most important thing. I often tell principals that their most important job is to keep students and staff safe. Their second most important job is to select and retain highly effective staff, particularly teachers. Matter of fact, 25% of a principal's state-required LEAKS evaluation is dedicated to human resources management. It's one of their most important duties. By these metrics that you'll see, by almost any metrics, there has been a failure of leadership at IAS to effectively manage their human resources. Let's first look at teacher experience. There's a marked lack of teacher experience at IAS. Their teachers are much less experienced on average than those in CCSD. You see the numbers there. The average IAS teacher only has about half the experience of the average CCSD teacher. 12.3 years on average for Cobb, 6.6 for IAS. While there's not necessarily a correlation between experience and effectiveness, generally speaking, you want more experienced teachers, and this lack of experience has likely contributed to poor academic performance of IAS. Of even greater concern, however, next slide, is a lack of certification at IAS. Certification, while not a guarantee of teacher quality, is still essentially the gold standard. IAS has a large number of less-qualified teachers, very high percentage of uncertified teachers, you see the numbers there, almost 1 in 4 teachers at IAS not being certified, 22.5%. Compare that with the district, 0.1%, 22.5% uncertified at IAS, 0.1% at Cobb. That extraordinarily high percentage of uncertified staff has almost certainly contributed to the poor performance of IAS academically, especially in terms of elementary school and middle school. It's ill-advised and unnecessary to hire this many uncertified teachers. You may need an occasional uncertified teacher, that diamond in the rough at the high school level sometimes will say someone who maybe has a degree in physics or an engineer retired from Lockheed who wants to teach high school physics, but at the elementary and even at the middle school level, but at the elementary level, there are about 50 qualified, fully certified applicants for every vacancy. So there is no need to have 22.5% of your staff be uncertified. And of the most concern, teacher turnover. The level of teacher turnover at ISS is very, very high, extremely high rate, more than 430% that of the average school in Cobb. You see the numbers there. For the most recent year, IAS's teacher turnover rate, 39%, Cobb's 9%, four times as much. When you look out over two years, the figure's even higher. Over two years, the average for IAS is 41% teacher turnover against about 9% in Cobb. That level of excessive teacher turnover indicates usually a serious problem with staff morale, school climate, and leadership effectiveness, as is the case with IAS. Dr. Kattulo mentioned some corroborating data in terms of the STAR Climate Survey Rating 1s or 2s, which would reflect typically on staff or parent morale as well. Unfortunately, this very, very high and concerning teacher turnover rate is not even addressed in IAS's renewal petition. So in conclusion, there's been a human resources failure by the IAS leadership. According to any metric, the leadership of IAS has failed to effectively manage their human resources, resulting in a teaching staff that's less experienced, much less qualified, and which has an extraordinarily high turnover rate. Now, I am sure that the majority of the hard-working teachers at IAS are good, decent folks that want to help kids. This is really an indictment of the leadership at IAS in terms of their use of human resources. But their failure to hire and retain well-qualified teachers has undoubtedly contributed to IAS's dramatic and accelerating decline in academic performance and unfortunately shows no sign of improving in the area of human resources. In conclusion, it's clear that there's been a failure of leadership at IAS in terms of human resources management and that this has translated into poor academic achievement. And I'll turn it over now at this point to Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent. For the International Academy of Smyrna discussion today, I have compiled applicable data from a financial perspective. I have analyzed this information and have comments to make regarding this data, and I'll go item by item of things that are of concern to me or things that I think you need to know and understand. Item number one, charter school funding defined by state of Georgia law. It has been asserted that IAS has not been funded appropriately. State of Georgia law defines charter school funding very specifically in State Code 20-2-2068.1. The Finance Division reviewed this law years ago, actually. We went paragraph by paragraph, and we continue to review this law on a recurring basis to check for changes. CCSD developed a funding calculation sheet where charter schools earn state funding and local funding. The Cobb County School District has fully and completely complied with this law. After all state and local revenue has been calculated, this revenue has been distributed timely to IAS each month via a monthly wire. Number two, item two, forward funding of IAS. One of the major components of charter school funding has to do with student FTE counts. When the school year begins, the state calculates and provides initial state funding based on an initial state student FTE count. Halfway through the year, a midterm student FTE count is performed where state funding is revised if the count changes. If the student FTE count goes up, the school will receive additional state funding. If the student FTE count goes down, the school will retain their revenue associated with the first count and is held harmless by the state from a decrease in state funding in the same way Cobb schools is held harmless if our student count were to go down. In order to provide extra assistance to this charter school, Cobb schools has forward-funded the school. So what I mean by that, in essence, a revenue adjustment was made where IAS provided an estimate of what they thought the midterm adjustment would be, and we used this higher count at the beginning of the year instead of them having to wait until mid-year, providing them with their midterm funding all year long. This is an example of this charter school being treated more favorably than other Cobb schools. Towards the end of each year, if their estimate of their midterm adjustment ended up being higher than the state's actual midterm adjustment figure, an adjustment was made to bring their revenue total down to the actual state midterm. This adjustment was proper and maintained their hold harmless funding level according to the state of Georgia. This decrease might not have been necessary had IAS's midterm estimate to begin with had been more accurate. Item number three, IAS has high facility costs. The high level of facility costs for IAS threatens the financial sustainability of IAS. This charter school itself made their decision to purchase their current facility. Guidelines established by the Georgia Department of Education states that the building cost for a school should be no more than 15% of their established expenditure budget. An analysis of their expenditures reveals that IAS's facility expenditures comprises approximately 25% or 10% points higher. This means that their facility expenditures consume 1 out of every $4 of their budget, which severely limits their remaining dollars spent for classroom instruction. Another way of describing this is that this leaves IAS with only 75 cents on each dollar for student instruction and operating expenses. Item number four, we performed a fairly detailed analysis of IAS's financial statements, and we looked at their financial statements as of their last audited financial statements dated June 30, 2016. Several issues regarding their financial statements. Number one, the charter school IAS has a negative net worth. In IAS's more recent audit report for the year ending June 30 of 2016, IAS reported a negative net worth of $5.6 million. Simply stated, the current and long-term liabilities exceed current and long-term assets by this amount. Another way to state this is that this school owes $5.6 million more than their assets are worth. Additionally, the change in net position for the previous year on the income statement was a deficit of almost $40,000, where their expenditures exceeded their revenue. As stated in their audit report from their auditor, "Over time, increases and decreases in net position may serve as a useful indicator of whether the financial position of the school is improving or deteriorating. It is troubling that IAS has experienced a decrease in net position in three of the last five years with a cumulative net decrease of $1.2 million over five years. Continued losses will endanger IAS's ability to have sufficient cash resources to remain financially viable in the long term." A negative net worth has placed IAS in a difficult financial position. Our review of these figures indicates that this entity is one crisis away from financial insolvency. IAS basically has no substantial emergency cash reserve or any equity to handle any large financial challenge or emergency. Another item that I'm concerned about as we looked at the financial statement was insufficient fund balance. Now I've talked with our board here many times about the importance of fund balance and maintaining a one-month or 30-days reserve. All financial experts, without exception, would render an opinion that unassigned fund balance should be at least one-month reserve and preferably higher. Many people say two months. IAS's management and discussion analysis notes in their audit notes that unassigned fund balance may serve as a useful measure of a school's net resources available to pay their bills. The ending unassigned fund balance for IAS as of June 30 last year was $78,940, which represents only five, I'm sorry, which represent only 4.5 days of operating expenses. This type of financial condition can ultimately result in an entity such as this charter school having to choose which bills it will pay and which bills it will not pay. Additionally, this financial condition leaves the charter school with a very limited capacity in which to be able to handle financial operating deficiencies or financial emergencies. My next item is comments about IAS's debt. IAS currently has entered into a long-term debt arrangement to fund its facility, associated with securing debt that IAS is required to adhere to. Number one, noncompliance with the liquidity loan covenant. As a condition of IAS's loan, IAS is required to maintain 45 days of cash on hand as measured on December 30 and June 30 of each fiscal year. Noncompliance is grounds by their trustee in their financial institution for declaring IAS in default of its loan, which would then trigger provisions that effectively transfer control of IAS's cash from IAS's management to the trustee named in the loan agreement. IAS has failed to meet this requirement in each of the last fiscal years. Some further comments on debt, deferred bond principal payment. On March 30, 2016, IAS signed an agreement with their bondholder to defer $150,000 of a required $190,000 mandatory sinking fund installment and defer it to July 1, 2017. In essence, this agreement delayed the payment. In essence, this agreement delayed the payment last year, but the payment will have to be made next year, which is this year. This creates a concern about the necessity of requesting this deferral of the required bond principal payment that was due on July 1, 2016, and IAS's ability to pay an increased principal payment of $205,000 on July 1, 2017. Simply stated, this delayed payment has placed pressure and will place pressure on the following year's budget. Any consideration or implementation of delayed payments is a red flag, is a red financial flag, and puts into question an entity's ability to maintain a sustainable, ongoing business arrangement. A payment deferral arrangement is not sustainable in the long term. What happens if IAS cannot make these higher payments in succeeding years? One final comment on debt and looking at their financial statements, we have an issue of noncompliance with the debt coverage loan covenant. As a condition of the loan made on IAS's school building, IAS is required to maintain a 120% ratio of net income to the annual debt service. What this means, in essence, is that IAS is required to generate 20% more net income than the amount of the annual debt payment. Noncompliance is grounds by the trustee for declaring IAS in default of its loan, which would then trigger provisions that effectively transfer control of IAS's cash from IAS's management to the trustee named in the loan agreement. IAS has failed to meet this requirement in each of the last three fiscal years. From a financial standpoint, if the trustee asserted this provision, they would have control of the school's cash and would have the authority to make spending decisions. My next item has to do with IAS's budget forecasting and just our view and observation of it. IAS has compiled budgets that appear to not have sufficient detail and documentation. An annual budget should be a financial plan that projects revenue, and then based on those revenue estimates, detailed plans should be compiled and planned on how that money will be spent and utilized in terms of specific expenditure categories, things like salary, benefits, supplies, computers, et cetera. The most recent IAS budget five-year version with regard to expenditures contained limited documentation. It appears that years two through five of expenditures of their forecast were exact duplicates of year one, with no consideration of potential increased cost estimates and no long-term planning. This type of reports places in question whether or not expenditure financial planning is a practice of the school administration. It is our opinion that failure to have detailed expenditure budget plan with limited documentation handicaps the schools when having to make expenditure decisions. Additionally, the most recent IAS budget plan assumes student growth. In light of the current IAS financial environment, the school would struggle to support additional costs. Then finally, I have some comments about IAS's audit comments. IAS currently engages an external auditor, their own external auditor, independent, to express an opinion of their charter school financial statements. They express an opinion based on whether the financial statements are presented fairly. They're not presenting an opinion on if they're financially, economically sound. While the auditor has maintained this audit, IAS maintains its financial statements on a cash accounting basis. According to the state, IAS is supposed to have implemented a modified accrual basis accounting system and utilized this system during the school year. IAS currently depends on their auditor to convert the financial statements at year end from cash basis to modified accrual basis, which is a necessary baseline to enable to do, for the auditor to perform an audit in the first place. Mr. Superintendent, this completes my financially related comments regarding the International Academy of Smyrna.
Thank you, Brad. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, this presentation was not comprised of anecdotal data nor opinion. We have compiled factual and empirical information and presented that to you. This decision for the recommendation I bring to you today was not an easy one, and it was not a quick one. This has been over the course of several months. And ultimately, what you see on the screen is a summary of what brings us to today's recommendation, and that is the one reason a school exists regardless in what form, whether it be a public school within a district like Cobb, whether it be a charter school, whether under the local education agencies purview, or whether it be under the state's purview. The one reason for their existence is to provide academic success to any and all students that attend that school. And as you can see, the academic achievement is not present. It has been on a downward trend since, for CCRPI at elementary level, as you can see, since the first year. While those scores were above the state and the district, they declined for the next three consecutive years, and you can see where they are today. The International Academy of Smyrna has not met its goals that yet prescribed for itself in its charter. That was at the beginning of the presentation that you saw today. And while I am not in a position to be able to recommend a renewal nor an extension, that decision should not be interpreted as anti-charter, not even anti-IAS, because the decision has to be relative to what's in the best interest in any school. Now, because of that, I am also going to ask that the board, as part of this recommendation, should the board choose to support this recommendation, I am asking to be able to reopen school choice for only the students at IAS, for any remaining vacant seats that we have in the district, and we have a substantial amount of vacant seats. So this will allow those parents of students at IAS, if they do not want to choose to attend their home school, even though that you saw in the slide, 90% of those would be attending schools that perform higher than currently IAS is performing. But should they want to choose to engage in a school choice opportunity, I'm asking that the board allow us to reopen school choice again only for those students that attend the International Academy of Smyrna, should the board choose to support this recommendation. And at this time, I am recommending to not approve the International Academy of Smyrna charter request for renewal or extension petition, and be happy to answer any questions as well as any of the executive staff present.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Who has questions? Okay. I'm gonna start here. I think we're gonna work with, all right. Ms. Sayer, I'd like to make a statement.
No. I'm in first. Well. I just need to make the statement first, and I'll hold my comments for later. But I did, I have had an association with the school, so to make sure that, in total disclosure, I contacted our board attorney to ask him if there was any conflict of interest. And I did assist in writing the charter five years ago, but I want to go on record as saying I did not have anything to do with those achievement goals, because I think those were totally unrealistic. I did not do that. I did do some training with the staff, I think that was probably in 2012 or '13, and with the governing board. And then my husband served on the governing board in the summer of, let's see when it was, 2015 to 2016. So I have had some association. I specified in my email to Mr. Doyle that I felt in no way that I was biased by any of that, however, that I could be certainly, if I felt that it was, this school was causing harm to students, that I would have no problem in voting against it. And Mr. Doyle's reply was that, according to, that he had reviewed Policy BH, which is our Code of Ethics, and BHA, which is the Conflict of Interest, and our nepotism policy. And these policies do not have any provision which would set forth a conflict of interest that would impede your right to vote as a board member based on the information you provided below. Paragraph one of the Conflict of Interest section of Policy BH states that board members are to announce potential conflicts of interest before board action is taken. So I just wanted that to be part of the record. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sayer. Any comments? All right. Thank you very much. I'm gonna work my way around. Is that okay? I'm gonna start with Mr. Wheeler, and then we'll head in that direction. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. According to the format, I ask whoever the thing. My question is to Brad Johnson, considering the financial questions. You know, we talk about fund balance and reserve and all those things. At any time, if that, if the IAS gets a crisis and they don't have that balance, say they can't pay their staff, or a roof comes off and they can't fix the roof, that school could shut down at any time during a school year. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Wheeler, for government entities, the balance sheet contains assets on one side and liabilities and equity on the other side. The substantial availability to confront emergencies is equity, and basically, for any government entity, the only equity portion of any substance is fund balance. You all will have to make your own decision about what is enough fund balance. But from my perspective, and any financial expert would say that because we don't have stock and all those other things on our equity, we have fund balance. So is fund balance sufficient to handle day-to-day operations, and is it sufficient to not have to borrow, and is it to handle emergencies? As I stated in my presentation, the school has, which is less than what financial experts recommend of one month. In fact, our auditor for our school district recommends two months. We just haven't been able to get there. But, you know, you compare 4.5 days to one month, and that, I concur that that's a problem.
Thank, so, I mean, like, my question is, say something happens in November, the school shuts down, these kids could all, in the mid-year, be re-up to all of our schools?
Well, they have, need substantial funds. Where are they gonna get it? And it's either from fund balance, or would a financial institution lend them money? And if a financial institution looked at their financial statements with the balance sheet and the income statement, that might be a challenge.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my next question is, Ms. Stoudt, with the CCRPI scores, when do they come back this year? When do we get those numbers?
That's lagging data. So this, next year's CCRPI scores will come into the district in December.
So this year, we won't get this year's until December?
Right, for 2016, '17.
In that same presentation, Mr. Cattula, Dr. Cattula, you said that the milestones, grades three and four, in 14, '15, they did make progress on some of those, but the same kids the next year didn't? I mean, when you talk about data of students comparing one class to another, I don't like that. Those are different kids. But your information is the same kids going from third grade to fourth grade, and fourth grade to fifth grade. Like I say, that was 14, '15 milestones, three and four, grade three and four. The same kids in '15 and '16 didn't progress? They went backwards?
What the data showing, if I understand correctly, that in 2014, '15, IAS had their third and fourth graders ELA perform very well, but those kids become the fourth and fifth grade students in 2015, '16. You can conclude because of their transiguency rate being so low that those similar kids were tested when they became fourth and fifth grade. And so therefore, from the data, you can conclude that those students, as collectively, did not perform as well as they did when they were in third grade.
Mr. Adams, HR question. Hiring staff, is it from a district or from a school? I'm gonna say I'm biased, because I'm a big proponent of the 49 percenters. I think that those guys are good. I know that IAS has some, and that, I think that's a great move. But if you, I'm not advocating you hire a whole staff of these guys, but without having to pay benefits, and would it be cost-effective if you utilize more and more 49 percenters? Would the veterans, would that be cost prohibitive, or would that be a save money to hire veteran teachers?
It depends on how you do it and who the 49 percenters are. The secret is not necessarily hiring anybody of any experience. You want to hire the best teachers you can. But as a general rule, a more experienced teacher, as a general rule, is better than a brand-new one. As a general rule, a fully certified teacher with an advanced degree is probably better than someone who doesn't have an advanced degree and isn't qualified in their field. 49 percenters sometimes can give you advantages. At the high school level, for example, you could actually have people that are two 49 percenters, each teaching two out of four periods on block, so you could have some economy of scale there potentially. But the downside to 49 percenters also, from the TRS standpoint, is that you, from a statewide perspective, is that 49 percenters are not contributing to TRS. There is a move currently, discussion for TRS to require in the future that 49 percenters who return, that the district has to pay the 49 percenters' equivalent of TRS, which is about to be 16%.
But right now, you're not, that cost is not incurred?
Not currently.
Let me jump in here, too, to add just a little bit. I would also offer, because that's an excellent question, Brad, is that you have to take into consideration the high turnover rate of teachers. So when you combine the fact that, with your example of having to have two 49 percenters to fill a full-time teaching position, you have to take into consideration the high turnover rate. So if that high turnover rate is affiliated with something other than salary or benefits, those kind of things, that high turnover rate is still gonna be applied to a 49 percenter.
Yeah, true. And I guess my last question is, Ms. Davis, Dr. Davis, you mentioned that these extension are, they're asking for two years. Is that, am I correct? Is there, is there a one-year extension as well, or is there not?
Well, originally, the original petition was a five-year renewal. And then that ensued conversations both with the state and the district, and then a two-year extension came up because of the serious concerns. And then subsequently, as you can see, attached to the board agenda item, the letter coming from the State Department, Janelle Cornwall, the attorney, indicating that, you know, they did not meet BTEAs, and they did not have a plan in place to address. So ultimately, it has dissolved. So basically, a five-year request for renewal evolved then into a two-year request for an extension, which then evolved in, well, can we get any extension, whether it be one year, two years, or what have you? And then ultimately, this decision and presentation takes into account that original letter communicated to the charter school and the district from the state. Again, Janelle Cornwall is attached to this agenda item. The facts in that letter and recommendation ultimately from the state have not changed. The facts contained within that letter are still substantial and accurate. The last part of the presentation that dealt with assertions, that, you know... The, the last part of the presentation that dealt with assertions, that, you know, seemingly overnight decision by some, some State Department employees, ultimately Lou Erstey, to say that he did recommend the two-year extension, was based solely on those inaccurate and false assertions. You go back to the facts contained in that original letter, that still stands. Those facts are factual data representing the, the recommendation that I'm bringing to the board today. Taking into consideration assertions and false information provides the basis for no decision. That's an accurate decision. And so ultimately, that's, that's why we have on the table what, but to get back to your question, it started with a five, then ultimately dissolved into a two and nothing.
Where I was going with that is, I'm, yeah, of course, I'm believing the five-year is what, traditional, or that's what, doing. I was just curious if there were other options that one, three, five? But you, you cover that, but I was just curious.
Mr. Morgan, do you have some questions?
Yes. First, let me say before I get to the questions that I feel like this is, as Yogi Bear would say, déjà vu all over again. We were here five years ago, even though they were under a different, I think they were under imagine at that particular time, and I think Scott, myself, and David Banks, right, were a part of the board at that time. And Chris, as you said, you know, this is a human being issue. This is, you know, you know, and all the emails that I'm sure all of us have received, you know, I don't want anyone to think that, you know, we just kind of, whatever Chris says, okay, we just take it, and things of that nature. And this is so personal to me, because I have been on the other side. I've been a part of a, I've led a charter school whose academic performance was stellar. But because you had a school district that was so adversarial, they were able to portray a picture that, hey, we didn't need to, we didn't need to continue, and superintendent had enough rubber stampers up there, and we closed our doors. So I take it very personally when I see situations like this. This is not a situation of, see, this is what happens all too often in public discourse. Either you gotta be on Chris's side, or you gotta be on David's side. Can never be any nuance. Never. So because I'm a proponent and advocate of school choice, people think that I just, no matter what you trot out there, I just say yes. And then you have the other side, people who are so shut down to school choice that they won't even have conversations about what is a quality school. My basic premise is this: geography and income should not determine quality. Period. And some people, you know, that's for the state capitol. Anyway. So as I sat here and listened to this presentation, one of, one of my underlying questions was, has the district put this particular school in the best possible position to succeed? Whether it is access, whether it is funding, whether it is communications, a litany of issues, has the district really, in good faith, tried to act as a partner? Say, hey, we want to help you because these are babies, and we want them to get the best possible education? And after listening to the, the presentation, and I'm sure at our night meeting they'll come in, I'm hard-pressed to believe that the district, for the duration of this charter, has not been doing everything it can to say, hey, we want to welcome you into the fold so that you can have information, that you can have access if you do have issues. And one of the biggest challenges I have found, whether it's this particular charter situation or other schools, they don't even know what's in that charter. They just, we got a school. And then somewhere in the midst, in terms of the metrics, that gets lost in the shuffle. Will also say that, when I was looking at the numbers that were presented, you have to be very careful about numbers in this regard. Someone could look at Riverside Intermediate School in my post and say, oh, man, on a CCRPI, they were 58%. Bad school. Look at another school that has a high number and say, good school. But because we're in this, we typically take a deeper dive into numbers. To me, the more important would be trends. What have been the trends over the last two, three, four years? If it's on an upward trajectory, then to me, that means you're doing something right. But if you have two, three, four years of downward achievement, then that means that things are going in the other direction. So I, as I told every single one of them that, that called me, I have an open mind. I'm not up here to, just because Chris says jump, I'm gonna say how high, I'm gonna listen to all the information. But it's hard, I'm hard-pressed to believe that this is a situation, as were five years ago, that this is a situation where, in good conscience, I could say, keep sending those babies to that school. It's just, I, when they come here and speak tonight, I'm gonna listen. But in, 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 in looking at this in its totality, I'm just hard-pressed to believe that this is a situation where they have, if they were given two more years, because of the infrastructure and what seems to be inherent challenges that they have, I'm hard-pressed to believe, quite frankly, I don't believe, that they will overcome those things. Two quick questions. First question is to Mary Elizabeth, you said that, Dr. Davis, I apologize, International Baccalaureate IB, have they actually attained that, that particular, because I know it's pretty heavy lift to get to actually.
According to the narrative provided in their charter petition, they have.
Okay. According to that? Okay. And final question is, and maybe this is in general, does the district still have a liaison, so to speak? Somebody like, hey, if you need to ask a question or get in contact with us, I don't know if it's still the same or someone different. I remember it was a doctor, it was U.S. Davidson, Dr. Davidson at one time. Do we still have that liaison that they can readily ask someone, access someone?
Yes. And, yes, he, he still is in that position, and it's through the office accountability, which obviously, Dr. Catua is the Assistant Superintendent over that division, ultimately reporting up to Deputy Superintendent Stoudt. But to go further, I think what, what you have seen demonstrated by the presentation is all departments have been readily accessible and communicative to International Academy of Smyrna throughout the, the five-year period.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Sweeney? Any questions? All right. Ms. Thayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Ragsdale, I respect your opinion and the opinion of your staff, and 99% of the time, I agree with you. But, you know, there is that old adage out there that if we agree all the time, one of us isn't needed. So I think it's, it's healthy sometimes to see things from other, other sides and analyze it. And I think that's healthy for a school board and a superintendent to see that, too. So in this one, I, the school is in my community, so I, I do look at some things from a different side, maybe, but also, as an educator, I look at it. Of all the emails that we got, those that were accusing in form letters, I deleted immediately. But the ones that were, the ones from parents that had written and talked about the commitment their family had made, and let me stop and say, pollen has taken control of my vocal cords, I'm not about to cry, I am not emotional, it's just I can't talk very well because the, the pollen has just gotten me. So I'm, I'm not emotional at all here. But anyway, I did read those, and I saw a lot of emotion, I saw a lot of commitment. And that's a good thing to have in a school. So that's, that's a good essential thing there. I also got a phone call from a community member, Ron Davis. He is a very active man in our community, and that's just one of the calls I got. But he's involved in, in Kiwanis. And like most Kiwana chapters, they go in and out of our schools all the time. They read in our schools, and they're, they do projects in our schools. And he was talking about IAS, and he said, when he went in, that there was a feeling there. There was a community feeling, there was a good feeling within the school, and kids were, were behaving, they, they looked like they were learning in classrooms, that there was a good feel. And I know as an educator, I, I know when I go in schools, I can tell if it's a good school. And Ron may have been in enough schools that some of that's rubbed off on him. I don't know. But I know that there's some feeling there, so there must be something going on there. I know that it's a, it's a bad time of year to be making a decision like this and putting this many people out of work this late and upsetting this many people. So there's, there's that one side of it, that portion of it. Then I look at the problem areas. There's the financial, and there's the academic. And if we look at the financial, there's a $700,000 era that was determined. And, and I don't look as much, I don't think, most of my career, I don't worry so much about who did it as what are we gonna do from now on to change it? So in looking at things, I look at, okay, now what are we gonna do? Well, we discovered the $700,000 era. That's fixed for the future. Plus, we know that they qualify for Title I. That's a huge treasure trove of resources that are going to be coming into that school to help them. So it seems to me those two things help their financial picture greatly. So that changes their financial picture already. That's a part of it. But that financial picture, and what it's done in the last several years, impacts a lot of things. Mr. Adams talked about their faculty, the turnover, the, the lack of certification, all those things. Much of that's tied to what they've been paying, because I believe they've cut salaries because they didn't have the money, is my understanding at least, which the $700,000 would be about $10,000 per teacher that they could have been paying. So that's a lot. So they've lost teachers, they've underfunded teachers, and they, so they've had a great turnover. That in itself, the, the chart that's up there, that would have a lot to do with that decline in those first few years. And this ties in with the, with the lack of funding. Also, we know that they just qualified for Title I funds. What that means is their socioeconomic status has been declining. And historically, anyone who's dealt with test scores knows that test scores historically follow socioeconomic lines. That follows the decline also. So those two elements alone help explain some of that decline right there. Then you look at that nosedive in scores. Scores don't usually do that. Something's wrong. But I don't see, hear of anyone from IAS, maybe they have, but I don't hear of anyone from there that's talked about that one-year nosedive. There's something wrong. I don't know whether they didn't report it right, but nobody has come up and said, this is what happened, and this is what we're gonna do about it. Which leads me to believe they don't have the academic leadership in that school that they need to have. And that's one of the reasons, main reasons for this fall. And I guess I see that and feel that, because curriculum and, and testing were my two areas of strength throughout my career. But the money and the test scores and all of this seems to just paint a picture to me. And it all makes sense to me, and it's all tied together. So again, putting fault aside, it all makes a lot of sense to me. And it doesn't seem to me, we've had the leadership there academically and so forth, to realize some of this and straighten it out. But now, particularly since the funding is straight, there is a chance to straighten it and turn it around. And certainly, if they have these huge debts, closing the door is sure isn't gonna help that. So I don't see why we wouldn't give them a chance to, now that these are spotted. And one of the things that their governing board told me was that, one of the things they planned to do was hire a full-time academic coach, which they certainly need. Obviously, they should have done it years ago. But that's one of the critical things that they've been needing in that school, because that can be done, and turn this picture around. So if they're willing to do that and see a need to, somebody needs to be hired immediately over there, work through the summer, and figure out what happened to that nosedive. That makes no sense. Again, the declining socioeconomic and the, the declining ability of teachers and the non-certified teachers have a lot to do with the general decline. Find out the other, figure out what's wrong, and get them turned back in the right way, all makes a lot of sense to me. So again, I see no reason not to. That's the main thing to me. But then there's the other side that I look at. I look at Mr. Morgan's area, and I look at my area. And, and this is just the other side. We are full to the brim. And even if we open choice, most of these parents are not gonna take the time. There, there are no other schools in our area that have many, enough openings for these students. So we're going to take 1,000 students and put most of those in schools that don't have the capacity to handle them. And we're going to overcrowd schools that are already overcrowded. Now, and we don't have relief until we get SPOS V funds to deal with this. So we're creating a more difficult situation for our other schools in both post-three and post-two. So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So just looking at all of those things, and if we gave them two years, at least we would be closer to being able to take care of these students from a capacity standpoint. Again, I think that the school needs to take responsibility for their own actions. I think they need better leadership in that regard. I think they need to have better analysis of what's been happening to them. But I think they deserve two years to fix that. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
See, let me, let me respond to a couple of points. So basically, I cannot in good conscience recommend a two-year extension, because ultimately, and you kind of hit, hit on this, is the failure is not by the kids. The failure is by the adults. Unfortunately, the impact is on the kids. And so I, I think that it's our responsibility to recommend the best learning environment for, for all of these kids at this particular school, which is, in my opinion, is for them to come back to Cobb County schools. The other comparison I would make to the, the two graphs that are up on the screen now, specifically the elementary school data, is that we have, very similarly to a charter contract with a district, we have an IE squared contract with the state. And that contract says, over a five-year period, we are to make three years' worth of growth. So a school that has three years of declining CCRPI scores, and that is the measuring stick, is going to be very hard-pressed and right near impossible to make three years of growth determined by the CCRPI formula. So I, I would offer that, that comparison for what our schools are held accountable to. And also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, because just like you, you know, I got the form letters and, you know, the, all of the same emails and those kind of things, and, which basically didn't require too much effort at all, except to cut and paste and send. But, but I did get a few emails on both sides that were very well-written and very well-thought-out. And again, I got, on, on keeping it open, a very lengthy and well-written email that was actually full of passion, you could tell that, for the school, and felt to be part of that school. But I also got emails on the other side that identified basically some of the things that we have presented today, in that, you know, I have multiple kids, I've already taken some out, I'm trying to get the rest out, and, and these kind of situations. So I did get both sides of, of communication from parents. So, and again, it's definitely not an easy decision. of communication from parents. So, and again, it's definitely not an easy decision. And to use the phrase, but he didn't say this word from Mr. Morgan, it was definitely not a flippant decision. We have spent many, many hours making sure, double-checking, triple-checking that we had accurate data, that it was empirical data, that it had, you know, we knew the sources, we double-checked against and cross-referenced against state data. As Mary Elizabeth indicated, we engaged in conversation with the state on the issue of free and reduced lunch percentage that was erroneous according to IAS. And so we engaged with IAS and the state. And then ultimately, the state issued their opinion that even if it was incorrect, it would not have made the difference to bring them up to where they beat the odds. Because beat the odds, and we didn't spend a lot of time on this, that is in place for charter schools to exactly what you're saying. If in year four of a charter period, a school makes an improvement, to your point, Mr. Morgan, that beat-the-odds mechanism is there to allow a charter school some breathing room to make sure that wasn't just an outlier, it wasn't just a hiccup, that they can sustain that growth. But again, we're looking at declining growth, especially at the elementary school level. And then going back to Dr. Katua's slides with the red and the green and Brad's question, you know, comparing the same students because, as again, Dr. Katua brought up, their transient rate is 7% and below, which is very, very low. So you can compare year-to-year for class to class because you can make that assumption that it's the same students. You're comparing from third grade and then the same students in fourth grade. And when you look at that comparison to Brad's point, Brad Wheeler's point, the growth was not there. The academic success was not there. So I do hear you, Ms. Thayer. And I just want everyone to know that this was not an easy decision and it was not a quick decision. And I felt like, and you know, the last part of the presentation was responding to assertions, although incorrect, they were assertions that were made. And I felt like that it was inerrant upon us to make that presentation, that we corrected those assertions. And ultimately, that's why we started with the academic goals and the charter goals and then ended with the academic performance graph because the assertions are part of it, sure, but they're not the crux of the decision. The decision is based on the academic achievement of that school. So that's why we felt like the decision that has been recommended is what it is.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Mr. Scamhorn, did you have any questions?
Okay.
I hope I can last. But I thought you were going to save the best to last, but I'll yield to Mr. Sweeney. How's that on that? Okay. You know, I don't say this very often though, but I'm just a country boy that wandered in, you know, and I was going to get a bottle of water and they asked me to sit up here. But we'll try to do the best we can. Mr. Ragsdale, if you could help me out here, as a school district, from an impartial point of view or even a humanistic point of view, what is, do we have a dog in the fight? What is our advantages or disadvantages to any charter school, not just this one, but why would we have it in for a charter school, if you will, for lack of a better way of putting it?
Yeah, sure. I appreciate the question. And it kind of goes to my closing remarks that I made, which are, this decision is not to be interpreted or misconstrued as anti-charter or even anti-IAS. This decision, and to use your term, the dog in the fight that we have is the students. The student success are the students. The student success is our mission. It's there on the screen. One team, one goal, student success. That is our mission. If our one goal is student success and we don't make the recommendation that takes into account student success is the bottom line, then we are not living our mission. And that's one thing that we always talk about at LNL. And I'm always saying to our leaders in this district is, this mission statement is not just words on a card. We live it. We believe it. And I don't think you could find an employee in this district that does not know the one team, one goal, student success. I think that as a whole, our employee base does believe that. And we do act on that. So to answer your question succinctly, it's the dog in our fight is student success.
Thank you. And I don't have a pre-perception, perception of whether they should stay open or closed. Like Mr. Morgan said, I'm just listening and I'm trying to collect the data and watch. But I want to say, Ms. Thayer, Mr. Morgan had stated a few things, not relative to what I'm going to say, but based on them saying it. But it's well-known publicly, I am strong pro-school choice. And I've stood before faculty meetings and have said that. And I have defended it very successfully. The issue, though, from a broad point of view, from the state's point of view, is they want to push school choice, but they don't want to give us an even playing field in my mind, or they don't want to explain to us how they want to go about it. Therein lies the devil in the details. However, back to more specific things. And one last note on that, I am not pro-vouchers. Vouchers and school choice to me are two separate things. So I want to be clear on that. But, and I hope these aren't too random. But starting out, and Dr. Davis, pardon me if I don't look too far over there because it really hurts my throat. Turn my head. How and/or who sets the target goals? You were mentioning that they failed to meet the goals certain in the last three years or four years. Could you explain briefly how those goals are set?
Thank you, Mr. Scamhorn. Yes, let me go ahead and just hold up for you again that there are documents that are drafted by the petitioner, in this case, the International Academy of Smyrna, that clearly outlines what academic goals will serve to represent this higher state of academic achievement that they can accomplish, given flexibility from the law. The narrative associated with the petition then goes ahead, and you can see this is all drafted-out narrative, goes ahead and articulates exactly what the instructional model will look like in order to meet those goals. So the author of both the goals and the plan to meet the goals is the International Academy of Smyrna. They submit to a local authorizer, in this case, the Cobb County School Board, for agreement that that would be remarkable outcomes and we will give you a charter status in order to achieve those remarkable outcomes with that alternative plan of instruction.
I'd also like to add that the process for renewing a charter is actually suggesting that our authorizer has confidence in the capacity of that petitioner to do what they outline in the charter terms.
I didn't want to cut you off. Next question for you is, you said concerning teachers, some of the reports, if that's the right way to put it, was not reported, or some of the data was not reported from IAS. Did we have, did we request that data when it didn't come in in a timely fashion? And does anyone recall whatever their responses may be or why they may not be reporting it?
Mr. Scamhorn, I can tell you that I don't have any record of a specific request that came unfulfilled for those particular goals. Mr. Adams, those goals were specifically related to the development of professional goals, professional learning plans, conference attendance, and peer evaluations. And so do you want to elaborate any further?
Sure. We do work with them some on evaluations as well, although I don't want to get into a detailed discussion of evaluations. Those would be confidential.
Mr. Adams, just to help you out, I'm not looking for that. I was just looking for, you know, did we have, we may not have had reason, this is not put us on defense, but did we reach out for that data? And what was the response?
And I don't have to research what specific one you're talking about. In general, through Dr. Davidson as our liaison, we have worked with them and in some cases, reached out for data. We've also, through Bruce Frazier, who is our Director of Leadership Development in this past year, have done some reaching out and working with them as well. But I will remind everyone respectfully, and I believe it's in their contract as well, but it's incumbent upon them to provide us with updates of what they said they're going to do.
Yeah, let me jump in here too for a second. The short answer is no. And to reference Mr. Adams' response there as to the responsibility of the charter school to do things. But also let me bring up, in comparison, on something as important as the CPI report, to quote a specific example, and this went on just about every time the CPI report was due, it was a last-minute submission. We still tried to get with them to correct any errors. However, the specific example I'll quote is, there is an instance to where the CPI report was given to us the day that it was due, when there were numerous errors identified by the district on that report. We reached out and ultimately was told, because the principal had to be the one to correct these errors, was told the principal was out of the office and not available. So they waited until the last day. They submitted CPI report with substantial errors and then were not available for us to work with to try to correct those errors. So it's, you know, I use that as an example to say, we were not successful in obtaining a working partnership on very important things like the CPI report. When we did not receive data incumbent upon what was, you know, to be collected or to be adhered to within the charter, we did not reach out to ask for that data.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, if I may, a couple of questions for you. It's mentioned in several emails, and Ms. Thayer mentioned it also, the $700,000 mistake. Let me back up. What is their, what should their fund balance be for one-month fund balance? I know you stated they had 78K and some change, but what, if they were operating financially solvent, as we would hope, what would be their fund balance on a monthly basis?
About $600,000.
Okay. So the $700,000 is basically only one-month fund balance. Then would you agree with, or a little more?
They should have around $580,000 to $600,000 in fund balance, which would be a one-month reserve.
Okay. So it's only about 100K more than just one-month reserve. So that, what I'm looking for is the significance. I'm not looking to nitpick. I'm looking, in my, I didn't have a context as how significant the 700K would be. I mean, just analyzing history, if you will. So it really would not be significant in my opinion. Would you differ with my opinion on that?
Yes. I don't know how you define significant. I mean, you're right, the facts that you stated is it would be 100,000 more. I'm not sure if 700,000 would make a difference one way or the other.
Okay. And in full disclosure, Ms. Thayer helped answer that for both of us. I'll leave it at that. Does the CCSD audit include the IAS operational perspective? Does our audit take into account IAS? And for that matter, can it sell charter?
The annual external financial audit for Cobb schools is completely separate from the International Academy of Smyrna. Smyrna has their own audit and ours is completely separate from that.
So each of their situations would not hurt or help us in the sense of the way we do business or how good we would look then, would it?
From a financial standpoint, it's there completely separate.
There you go. Okay. You mentioned that IAS was funded forward.
Can I add something to that, though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which is, you hit on it, and it's a little bit of a new issue that we're still trying to get to the bottom of. And that is the state's effort to treat charter schools, not just IAS, but all charter schools, as part of what they call a component unit of the school district. And that has significant implications. Your external auditor is very concerned about that. I'm concerned about that. It would make me concerned about every charter school and maybe an effort, I don't know if this is being pushed by charter school groups or who for that matter, or maybe not, maybe it's just coming from the state, to treat them as one. And that would make you responsible for certain things like financial conditions and reporting increasingly over time. And that is a very recent shift. So I think in the way Mr. Johnson stated it in the past, we have all known it as separate and known it to be separate. And we've all thought about it that way. The state may be changing that. And I'll ask Mr. Johnson to correct anything that I said or add anything there. But you touched on a very significant concern of council and of your auditors.
So in terms of looking at the audit, the most recent audit for International Academy of Smyrna as of June 30th last year, 2016, things like fund balance reserve, things like negative net worth, all those things would impact our auditors when they looked at us if they were a component unit. And so I think that the state is trying to look at component units, the Financial Review Division, and they have suggested that maybe component units might be where they want to go with this. I certainly wouldn't want financial information that we did not prepare included in our work and then it affects our audit. And that's where I'm totally opposed to this.
Well, not to get off on a tangent, Mr. Doyle, but that almost sounds like a discussion that we should have in the near future, maybe?
Yeah, that's a pretty new issue. And it is certainly a discussion that will be held, but it's on the beginning end of the conversation, I think, between the auditor and the state.
Well, in the context of what I was, why I was asking was to make sure that I understood the relationship that we had in the past that has led us to this. And it's, my understanding is separate. And they had the responsibility, although we were always here to help them if needed or ask, correct?
Yes. From a financial perspective, we have always been separate entities. But I will say this, in addition to Mr. Doyle's comment, that our auditor has already reviewed the component unit issue in terms of government accounting standards. And they have already rendered an opinion that we are, they are not a component unit. But then the state's trying to say or take a position that they are. So that's where we are.
Thank you. And my questions are shorthand, so I'll try to reword them here. But IAS, you said that, you stated that IAS was funded forward. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Was that pretty accurate? And is that basically like, whatever monies they need, normally, we would wait until the end of that until the end of that period and then reimburse them? But we were not reimbursing them, we were giving it to them ahead of, ahead of time, correct?
Little bit difficult to explain, but they start the year with an FTE count, and then every year, as everybody knows, we have a state midterm count. We have let them estimate their state, their midterm count. And if their midterm count was higher than the final state midterm, we would adjust them downward. But in essence, we were letting them have their midterm money for the whole year, starting at the beginning of the school year. And then later on in the year, if that estimate was too high, we would adjust their funding downward, down to the state midterm amount, which is the proper amount.
If I can, let me, let me throw in a little bit different, but along the same lines comparison. So what Brad said is, is, is right. We front them the money. Let's say, they say that their FTE today, according to the count, is 900. They say that their FTE for this, this school year is going to be 1,000. We fund them based on that 1,000, okay? So the similar comparison would be, in our district, if the state went ahead and gave us the midterm adjustment July 1, that they're going to do, they're going to estimate in January, which we never really actually get until March, right? So it's not midterm, it's third quarter term. So it would be like the state going ahead and giving us our midterm. I don't think we would have any chance in the world of getting the state to do that, but that was just an example, and, and I, I need to say, that's an example of how we actually treat the charter schools, both Kennesaw and IAS, much better than the district is, is treated by the state.
But it'd be a fair assumption, then, to some degree, and, and I don't wish to get into detail, but we can if we want, but to some degree, that would also mitigate the 700,000 kind of clerical error, if, if, if that existed.
No, not really. It's two, two totally different things. But at, at one point in time, the statement was made that we did not properly fund them, and we diminished their funding. And to some degree, that, that was associated somewhat to the, to forward funding, because, again, come midterm adjustment, when that state actually gives the midterm adjustment, you're held harmless if your FTE went down. So in that same example, if their FTE for the start of the year was 900, they said they were going to be at 1,000, but they actually dropped to 800, they're held harmless, and they don't lose money from that 900 level funding, the same way that the district is held harmless. But we would not get any additional money. So what happens is, because we have front-funded them that money based on that inflated estimate that they provided at the beginning of the year, well, then we reduce down their funding for the remainder of the year to that hold harmless state. So yes, we did make a correction, but it was not in contrast to the hold harmless situation. It's actually in support of the hold harmless situation.
That's, okay, thank, that's what I'm looking for. And, and I, I think this would be to Mr. Johnson, but Mr. Superintendent, whoever you'd like to direct it to, do we have an estimate, or maybe even an exact count? How many hours have we used as a staff to substantiate all of the data and information that you had to put together?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, with an S, right? Does IAS refute their financials in the sense that we've seen it here? Are they, other than maybe the 700K, or however that came about, are they disagreeing with our presentation? Or however you want to word it?
In our meetings that we've held with them, where the financial concerns were outlined, they did issue a little bit of pushback on the assumption provided from financial services in, in attune to their financial insolvency, and ultimately, the financial nature in which they operated under. So the short answer is yes, they did disagree with this, with the analysis coming from our financial services department somewhat. I wouldn't say that it was a wholehearted dismissal of the analysis, but there was some pushback about how the analysis was provided. Brad, you want to add something else?
A good deal of what I presented today, Mr. Scamahorn, was us looking at their audited financial report as of June 30th, 2016. So we're just making observations of what their external independent auditors already said. So I'm just basically stating the obvious as I looked at their financial statements.
Okay. And I just have a couple of quick questions. I thought all my questions had brief answers, but, but, and this is open in also, and part of me, of what I'm driving to, and I think I've already got an opinion, but I want to ask the question, is there an advantage to us from a particular point of view for us to close a charter school?
Again, I go back to your comment about, do we have a dog in the font? And it's all relative to the students and the academic progress, and that ultimately academic success of the students. So I, I would say, there is no benefit to a school district to open or close a charter school. The benefit to open or close a charter school has to be to the students. So when we go back to, you know, when, when the charter amendment passed several years ago, it was that a charter school was to provide something unique and innovative that the public school could not provide. And so I think today, you would be hard pressed to actually have that as a requirement for a charter school, because quite honestly, you can't go with all of the STEM and the STEAM applications we have in our district, and that's just one area. You'd be hard pressed to be able to open up a charter school that provides something above and beyond what the Cobb County School District provides. And I will point to any number of things, the early literacy and the sixth school proof of concept that we have shown. I think the difference is, and I don't want to toot our own horn, but I'm going to toot it pretty loud right now, is that what you have seen with this team, from executive cabinet down to the entire organization, is we're not going to be anecdotal. We're not going to say, well, I think this is going to be the best thing for mathematics since, you know, I don't know what sliced bread has to do with mathematics, Mr. Morgan, but that's a good analogy, I guess. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, yeah. So, but in all seriousness, I, I think you, you know, what you have seen with this district is, we're going to present things that we can prove work to the benefit of the students. So whether it be CTLS, whether it be the resources that we are choosing to put into the schools, whether it be the early literacy, whether it be the reading inventory, whether it be the math inventory that's coming up next, we're not going to throw this out to 67 elementaries or 114 schools in this district before we have proven that whatever theory we have that ultimately concludes with student success and academic improvement, we're not going to be able to throw that out until you know, as a board, that we have gone through, we've proven it to you, and we have shown the empirical data that stands behind whatever theory we have. So, so again, I say, in today's world, at least in the Cobb County School District, our schools are improving, and our schools are highly functioning, regardless of what area of the county you live in. Because what you will find is, is that, for example, that first graph, there is not an elementary school in Cobb County that has experienced three consecutive years of CCRPI diminishing. It's not there. So I give that to you as empirical data and not my opinion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and to the staff, thank you. Just summing up, what is driving my questions, besides your presentation, but primarily what's driving my questions is, and I don't know if anybody else is counting, but I lost count for the emails and phone calls that I've got, that's well over 400, and I glanced at every one of them, and many of them have accused us of being reprehensible and, and malfeasance. Couple of them even said, excuse me, couple of them even said, we're giving millions to the braids. Now, I'm not going to be personally offended, because we deal with emotional circumstances, and there is nothing more emotional, and I believe, not speaking for the board, but I believe, knowing the board members, we do not take the, the education and the lives of our students lightly, ever. But I wanted to make sure that I ask, hopefully, pertinent questions, that those with an open mind that don't want us to close, and I, I've not made up my mind yet, and I'm, as Mr. Morgan said, I'm going to wait and listen to, to, to tonight, for if anyone shows up. And I, if, so I'm not taking that bet, Mr. Morgan. But I want to make sure that we ask the right questions, and that those that are listening know that we take this seriously. So, Mr. Superintendent, thank you so much for your answers. And, Mr. Chair, I yield back and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Ms. Thayer, you had something else?
I did. Dr. Davis, in, in the beginning of your presentation, you talked about, I think you were talking about the, what charters are based on, or something, and you talked about this, you said something about that the responsibilities, one was annually review budgets and papers. Can you read that again? Can you find what that was? It was right toward the beginning of yours.
Yes, yes, ma'am. There are state Board of Education rules that dictate the role that local authorizers have in agreeing to their contract terms. The first is related to academic performance. There, there are many in, in the state board rules. The second is related to ensuring that local charter schools are fiscally sound and operating in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards, including annually reviewing budgets and reviewing working papers as needed.
So there is, so there is some responsibility that we, so academically and from, and from a financial responsibility, we do have some oversight responsibility?
The actual statute would suggest the opposite of that. There's no oversight allow, there's no governance permitted by the local authorizer.
I thought you said the authorizer had, was to annually review budgets and papers?
As needed.
I thought annually review.
The terms of the state board rule do, quote, annually review as needed, and I would suggest that as part of our process related to all charters, we have a director who's overseeing charters, and there is ongoing communication.
Okay.
I also believe that Mr. Johnson could talk about additional conversations specific to finances that occur on a fairly regular basis.
I think we've gone over so much of that, I didn't mean to get into too much detail there, but, you know, I just.
It gives, it gives the authorizer permission to request those types of information as needed.
Okay, okay.
Let me also say to that point, because that's a good point, is to make the comparison of, the local authorizer, in this case, the district, does have the authority to terminate early a charter. And so in that regard, I think that's, that's kind of the gist of, of what you're pointing to, is that if we were going to terminate a charter early, we should have been, the expectation would be, there had been a lot of communication going on up prior to that early termination. In this regard, this is not an early termination. This is simply, are we going to renew or extend? So I just want to make sure that, again, to, to your point, the authority is, is there to early terminate. The authority to go in and say, you must do this in order to do that, you must do this in order to meet your charter goals, is not there. Because the, the indication of the law, as, as the first slide said, was to provide a charter school with the autonomy from the district and the law, and the flexibility they're into. But in regards to that, they're held to a higher level of student accountability and academic performance.
Yeah. Well, as I said earlier, I think whoever set their original academic goals was totally misinformed on the, what was attainable for this, for this charter school. So I think that was an era to begin with. But you did say that it would be hard to find something unique to do, but as Reverend Morgan has preached to us on many occasions, they, they do.
Take up the legs.
Yeah, that's all you haven't done.
Prosperity.
They do have that unique thing of parental involvement here, and that seems to be what a lot of the parents have bought into, that, that, that requirement to be involved, and that is what a lot of them have, have bought into there. So it is a parent choice kind of thing, and that's, I guess that's one of the things that still hangs me up, that it's, do we go in and save these children from, you know, educational downfall? It's a parent's decision that this is the best place for their child. They have access to this information. I can look at those charts and pretty much tell you, with the information we've been given here, what happened, and I haven't been in that school, and I can pretty much tell you probably how to fix it. But it wouldn't take much to do it, I don't think. But I, I think it's a doable thing. Again, I think it's an explainable thing, except for that nosedive. Something's really strange there, and somebody's got to look at that. But again, it, it's, it's all doable. So to me, if, if parents know these things, and they still choose to put their child there, who are we to take away that choice? Because that's what choice is all about, and that's what charters are about. So that's where I've come from on this. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This IAS matter is very emotional, not only for the parents, the students, but for the board and for the community. It has no good, easy answer. And we've, like Ms. Raxdale mentioned, there's been discussions and debates going on for months about this situation, trying to resolve or come up with a good solution, yes or no. For me, there's basically three areas that, that we've had to evaluate. One is, like Ms. Thayer said, these parents made a decision. This is where they wanted their student, their child, and so they had a reason, and it's probably many reasons, but this is a, a situation where we may be saying to a lot of parents, if we decide not to renew, that a no is, you know, we're, we're not disrespecting their decisions and their, their beliefs, but I think this board has their best interests in mind, and they do respect the decision these parents have made. The other area is the academic. We've heard a lot of presentations here, and we've heard a lot from the parents that have children at those schools. And the question in my mind is, you know, what is the risk factor? Is the risk factor pro keeping it open, or is the risk factor closing it down? And the other area that we've discussed today is the economic, or the financial impact. Here again, it seems like we've got a risk factor. So in our deliberations sometime today, we're going to make some decisions on which side of that risk factor we're going to be on. So it's not like, as has been stated earlier, we're not So it's not like, as was been stated earlier, we're not against the parents. We're looking at what is the best focus for the students, and as Mr. Rixdale has mentioned, that needs to be my, our primary concern is what is going to be the best solution for this board to make today for these students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I agree with the comments that you just shared. This is certainly not a decision that I think any board member takes lightly, and I certainly know that the superintendent and his staff don't take, you know, this type of recommendation lightly as well. You know, really focusing on the three things that were conducted in the presentation that discuss performance, fiscally sound and also substantial autonomy. Dr. Davis, I think in your presentation, you mentioned the targets, for example. I was on the board when we actually authorized this charter, as was Mr. Banks, as was Mr. Morgan. I don't believe that the board would have authorized the charter if the targets weren't lofty. Okay? The thing is, is that we actually authorize a charter based on a school's promise to essentially over-deliver, et cetera. And by the measures that you shared with me, as I counted them, they hit four out of the 19 targets, and that is in a few different areas, obviously, but four of 19 equates to roughly 19% of the targets. On the fiscally sound thing, I'm deeply concerned about the fiscal nature of this particular institution. Our CFO has mentioned several different things. Number one, and this relates to the debt covenants that they have, you have a debt service coverage ratio essentially of 1.2 to 1, as I understand it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And yet, the school has failed to meet that for three years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I've worked in commercial real estate finance, and this is kind of in my wheelhouse, but essentially what happens in basically they're out of compliance, some people would label that as being in technical default. And in a situation like that, and as Mr. Johnson articulated, you have a situation where a lending institution can essentially trigger a cash sweep. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And a cash sweep basically saying that we're going to go ahead and take every bit of revenue that is allocated to this school and allocate it as we, the lender sees fit, and insert themselves in the place of the authority of the school. Is that correct?
That's correct. They would have the ability to assign money towards meeting their goals of funding the bond.
Correct. And as I also understood you to say that the, the school has elected, and I've had, I guess they've had some agreement, but they've elected to defer their bond payment, but because of that, there's a far greater bond payment that will be due this year.
I wasn't part of that discussion, but it appears in the audit report that they did try to renegotiate the terms of the loan, which in turn looks like it changed the amortization schedule. And so, yes, the payment that there's, that's going to be deferred is significantly higher, and then I don't know what the rest of the amortization schedule looks like going forward, but it's going to be higher than it was. So it's, it just places the budget more in a position of strain.
Okay. And I understand that the, you know, the district has an opportunity to review budgets and everything, but within the charter, and I'm reading the charter here, it says, "The board of directors made up of well-respected, business-savvy members of the community will have autonomy over budgets and expenditures." So though we're reviewing it, they're still in full control of the budgets and expenditures of this facility. You know, relative to the, you know, substantial autonomy too, the thing is, is that, and the superintendent actually articulated this, we've talked about the accountability as far as the charter is concerned, and the need for these students to essentially be in the best possible environment, learning environment, and there's not an individual up here that I know of on the board that would say or suggest that, you know, there's a lot of very passionate people at this school that, you know, like the school, like the environment, like everything, like many things that are happening there. But the thing that's very, very concerning is the decline in the performance, particularly in the CCRPI and the other performance metrics. You shared something else, Mr. Johnson. You had said that 25% of the revenues for this school are going to the facility expense. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just by way of comparison, the Cobb County School District, I mean, 90% of what we do is going to salaries and benefits, approximately.
That's true.
All right. 10% fulfills transportation, fulfills maintenance, fulfills everything, and then obviously the maintenance on our facilities. Okay? So just by way of example, one out of every $10 is going to something other than salaries and benefits versus 25% going to salad, excuse me, facility expense of this facility, which is a very, very high number. The $700,000, it's been referenced, you know, and I believe, is that related to health benefit? Can you describe that a little bit and what that, what the issue was on that $700,000?
The health insurance, health insurance used to be earned for every certified position as a percentage, and then in previous budget years for the state, they decided to only fund health insurance reimbursements for those who participated in health insurance. And so that has changed over the years. But on the CPI report, there's a way to indicate that, and I think John probably can answer that better than I.
Yeah, that goes back to a March 2015 CPI cycle. Essentially, prior to that period, you simply got a percentage. You got a percentage based on the number of people you had and were reimbursed for that percentage. And then the state changed the way it performed that reimbursement. We then detected that error in March of 15, made them aware of that, and then through some back and forth exploration, identified that it was even more significant than initially thought. And again, of course, that error was initially on the part of IAS, but it goes back to that point. It has been rectified, and so it's my understanding that going forward, those funds have been in place since the error had been corrected. So you would, you would think that that might translate into an uptick in those numbers.
Okay. And then there's no way for them to go back and receive those funds for the years that they did not appropriately file. Is that correct?
I am not aware of any.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, one of the other covenants you had mentioned is that loan covenant requires 45 days cash on hand. Is that 45 days cash on hand in addition to the recommended uncommitted fund balance? Or is that inclusive?
I think that's inclusive.
Inclusive? Okay. All right. What I understood you to say is that they have $78,000 in uncommitted fund balance representing four and a half days of operating expenses, and I did the backward math on this. So at 30 days, it's $520,000. At 60 days, it's $1,040,000.
That sounds correct.
Okay. So they're at $78,000. They've got a substantial bond payment that they're going to be making, exceeds $200,000. Was it 250,000 that you said?
The increased amount would be this year, 205,000.
205. Do we have any indication of how much they're going to receive in additional Title I funding, or is it too early to determine?
I do, I do not know that answer.
Yeah.
I think maybe too early.
Okay. Okay. I think that concludes my questions. Thank you very much.
If I can respond to just one, Mr. Sweeney, you mentioned, you made mention, and I think it bears repeating, that four goals were met out of the 19, or 21, I think is the total number, but irregardless, the four goals were dealing with attendance at the school. And so I think actually what the attaining of these four goals indicates is that it paints a much worse picture for the overall operation of the school, because even though students had a very high attendance rate, and even though there was a very low transient rate, the academic performance still trended down for three consecutive years. And so I think that overall, again, attaining those four goals makes the overall picture look a little bit worse.
Okay. Mr. Scamahorn, going to give you the last word.
Oh, thank you. That wasn't my intention, but I appreciate it. I did overlook a couple of things, but I ran out of air a while ago, so wanted to ask. Mr. Rixdale, have they presented any sort of written plan? I mean, from my emails that I get and phone calls, I'm getting a lot of emotion, but, you know, my background is like if I wanted to start a business and I wanted to go get, you know, a loan, the first thing they're going to ask me is, where's your written plan?
So the, the short answer to your question is no, but let me expand on that a little bit. The letter that is attached to this board agenda item, actually, the absence of such a plan to improve the CCRPI scores is referenced by the state attorney, Janelle Cornwall, when she said that not only did you not beat the odds, but minus a plan indicating that you are working to that, and it says, because there is no such plan, in that letter. Further, if you remember to Mary Elizabeth's slide, that refers to the two new goals attached to the new petition, ultimately, that again was a five-year renewal petition. There were only two goals located within that petition, and those two goals dealt with this current school year, which is in the current charter. So to further extrapolate, not only was there no plan to deal with three years of consecutive CCRPI drops, there was no future plan communicated as to what, the only thing that they could say is, is give us some more money and we'll do better. And, you know, that's, that's just not what the trend indicates, nor the data that we have presented indicates. So again, the short answer is no.
And just my reaction to that is, wow. You know, I, if I'm coming looking for help and looking for support, you know, if somebody came to me and wanted to borrow $20, my first reaction would be, how you, how do you plan to pay it back? You know, and go from there. It's, but I don't mean that to be trite, but.
Well, I think it goes to, to your previous point, though, too. And as we have had this discussion today, I think what has come out is the obvious and glaring fact that, okay, the 700,000 and change that moving forward they would have access to, I think we have talked about and discussed enough items that far overreach $741,000. Whether or not you want to talk about the 45 days, whether it's inclusive or not, that's more than one month of cash on hand, whether you want to talk about the 30 days of operating expenses, whether you want to talk about teacher salaries, whether or not you want to talk about benefits, whether or not you want to talk about resources, whether or not you want to talk about curriculum. I think that it's become glaringly obvious that 741,000, even in addition to the Title I money for next year, they've got a bigger hole than that money is going to fill. And, and turning this trend around, that's no easy task.
Can I just add, because you asked a little bit about written plans, there have been no amendment requests to the five-year charter. The last one you had related to this school would have been right before the five-year period started, and it related to an issue of imagine and whether they had done the right nonprofit setup, and they came and sought an amendment to patch that up, but that was before the current five-year charter. So I just wanted to fill that history in. You have had no amendment requests in the last five years.
That's puzzling to me. I'm sorry. I, I've not heard from them, but it's just, wow. Okay. And then finally, it's more of a statement than anything, but I'd like, excuse me, like to commend the superintendent and your staff, not only for the work you've done, but for your offer of school choice. And notwithstanding the, the outcome of the board's decision, have you all given, and this is not, I know you didn't expect this question, have you given thought how we might do that in a timetable?
Absolutely. We have already, I've already worked with Darrell and Kevin Daniel on how we would go about that. And to further extrapolate on that, if it's amenable to the board, I will actually update my superintendent's recommendation for the voting item for tonight's meeting to reflect that school choice. So obviously, if the motion included that, it would be incumbent upon us to do that, but I want to put it in, in writing as part of the agenda item if the board is amenable to making that modification.
Anyway, thank you for that, and it's well done as far as trying to look out for the kids if, if whatever happens tonight. Mr. Chair, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. The only comment that I would add is this is, it's an emotional subject, but the gist of all communications that I've had with people, whether it was email or telephone conversations, was that IAS believes that they could have been more successful had they had more resources from the Cobb County School District, and has been, has been repeated several times in this discussion today. It is an autonomous body. It is not for the Cobb School District to inject itself in the management. The only way legally that we can provide the students at the IAS sufficient Cobb County School District resources to achieve student success is to put those students in an environment where they are making themselves available of all the resources we have to offer, and that's the frustrating truth. But other than that, it is up to the leadership of the, of the, of the IAS to come to the district with a plan that is viable, sufficiently funded, with a leadership with the right people in play. You know, leadership is top-down, and that's the sad part here, is I think what we're seeing on this chart is a reflection of the lack of, and again, it's not to point a finger, but it's not putting all the right things in place at the right time. Maybe they shouldn't have issued the bonds and borrowed the money to strap themselves budgetarily. Those are things that probably, you know, that's Monday morning, Monday morning quarterbacking, but that is what we're looking at. So I'll just stop there. Now, the question is, do you want to take time for a break? Do we want to?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. 10 minutes. Be back here by 4:20. That gives you a minute to get there. We're, we're in recess. Thank you, and we are back from our recess, and now it's item number five, Superintendent's Report, Part D.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Obviously, we have been working on the budget. This is, of course, the first official presentation of the budget to the board. In recent years, we have attempted to have budget-related conversations ahead of time. Ahead of time meaning starting as early as October, November of the preceding year. However, what we have encountered is the situation, and quite honestly, a dangerous situation of playing what-if with a billion-dollar budget. Because taking into account conversations about our budget prior to us having real numbers is basically just playing what-if. So we have cautiously hesitated until now, even though we still do not have 100% accurate data on the digest information. And as you know, that's where our local tax revenue comes from, is the local digest. So there has been a hesitation this year and somewhat of a delay in us presenting to the board. But again, it's to avoid playing what-if scenarios with a billion-dollar budget. So that being said, we do feel very, I feel very good about presenting this budget to you. I will go ahead and take some of the thunder out of Brad's presentation and tell you that this budget does not include a 2% raise. As you all know, we've been through that information before. We pay more than the state salary schedule, 20% to 27% for every single teacher more. And so I did commit, and I will always commit, to do everything I can to keep every budget that I present to the board employee-centric. And this one is as well. I do have in here the recommendation to do a 1.1% bonus. We would time that for around Christmas, so that it would be a Christmas-type of bonus. But I just wanted to go ahead and throw that out there up front. And again, one of the things that we have done differently this year is I brought in the principals, and the principals only. Every single principal, executive cabinet, and cabinet, we had a meeting, and it was a budget meeting. And it was in order to bring into the loop principals, because as Ms. Thayer and I have talked in the past, it's very important to get principal input into a budget that's going to impact every school. So we did have that meeting, and we brought them in and explained to them that it was confidential information, that, you know, we wanted to bring them into loop, but we could not afford for information to get out ahead of us presenting it to the board. So we did have a very large staff meeting of about 150 to 170 people. But that being said, I cannot say enough about how proud I am of all of our principals for being able, number one, to keep the data confidential, but number two, provide input and ideas. Because quite honestly, we have, and I told the principals, that every budget for this school district is going to be hard. It's never going to change until we can do something to address the revenue that comes into the district. So that being said, we tried, we being cabinet and executive cabinet, tried to take most of the pain away from the principals encountering that pain. So we tried to get at, you know, the iterations that we went through to at least come to some sort of an semblance of a budget that we could talk with the principals about, so that they weren't into the nuts and bolts of every decision that had to be made going into that, from a lot much on down to everything. So I say that to the board as an encouragement, because it is one team. And as I told the principals in the meeting that day, everyone in that room is considered leadership of this district, and the leadership has to basically have a part and a say in the budget. And as I met with my principals advisory committee, they indicated that it was a very positive event. Granted, we had some hurdles, we had some hiccups that we'll do better with next year. But I think that it sets a good stage for us as a team to move forward in that process. The other thing I want to say upfront and be as transparent as we can, because I was with the principals as well, last year, we hit the wall with special ed allotments. And we hit the wall doing about Mach Two. This year, and again, as I've explained to the board in the past, some of this allotment process, we inherited, but that's not to point fingers. We have just been trying to take it on a yearly basis to try to tweak it, to get it back to a high-functioning allotment process. So last year, we did not hit the mark with special ed allotments. This year, we rectified that, and we resolved it. And I'm telling you to the board today that this budget has allotments that every single IEP in this district is fully staffed. And we have done that through special ed. Tracy Doe and Mary Elizabeth have worked to make sure that was identified down to the child in the IEP. Now granted, one thing is required for that to take place, and that is that special ed be scheduled first in schools, as it should be anyway, because those are the most specialized classes they have to deal with. So scheduling those first ensures not only that every IEP is fully staffed, but that every special ed teacher has planning time, which this current year that we're in did not. We had to have some special ed teachers going above and beyond, which I tremendously appreciate because they have, and I have not heard a word about it, which speaks to the one-team approach from all of our employees. So, because we all know, students with special needs, those parapros and teachers are a special, special type of person that can do what they do each and every day. And that's not to take away from any other employee, but I think everybody is reminded of that as we deal with our own children. So that being said, I know I took some of your thunder away, Brad, but I did want to say that to the board as we start on this process. So, Mr. Johnson. So, Mr. Johnson?
Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, today marks the first day of our budget presentation for this year. It seems like we just did a budget last year. This year has been a little bit different. Based on even the work the legislature did last year, we anticipated possibly a QBE funding formula change. And so we were very hesitant to try to predict what revenue might be for the general fund. We also were very hesitant to really take a crack at the property digest growth even. And so, that being said, we still could work on a lot of details on the budget. And we did start at the first of the year, and we've been working on the details. But it's very difficult for us to give you budget information where you can start thinking in your mind of what decisions you want to make without very good information on our two main sources of revenue, which would be state QBE revenue and local property tax and property tax growth. So here we are today. The budget and the state has passed. We think that the QBE formula is going to remain in place. We do have information about that that I can present today. We have had an estimate from the local property tax assessor, and we still don't know even information about that. There's still some sketchy information. We do know that the digest, their estimate was 6%, but there are-- there is data behind that, that we're still not confident of that number, because we don't even have exemption information yet. And y'all will recall that exemptions went up quite dramatically last year, homestead and age 62 and over. So we're working with the numbers we have, and we think we're fairly close. Today, we have a variety of information to present to you today. We have a budget calendar. We have a budget summary overview. We have your budget notebooks, where you can start looking into the details if you choose to. And just to give you an idea, those budget notebooks, even though we have a one-page summary sheet, all that is backed up by documentation in those notebooks. So every number that you have, we have tried to meticulously go through the accounts. Now, if you looked at one of our budget reports, it would be this high. There would be thousands and thousands and thousands of accounts. I don't really know how our staff really does it exactly. It's just a lot of hours of work. I appreciate their time to work overtime to get all that done. We also are going to be able to have the budget information put out to the Internet, hopefully tomorrow. We're working on that as we speak. And today is just your first glance at the budget, and I'm sure you all will be looking at the data. You will have lots of questions for us, as you always do, and rightfully so. You will have your opinions about the data. And so today, what I'd like to do to start off here is to talk about the calendar. So at your desk, up there, you have a calendar. And the calendar format is dates and responsibilities and events across the top in columns. And then you have a sequence of events down the left-hand column. So you can see up to the first yellow rows that a lot of the things have already been done. And I'm talking about a lot of budget detailed work with each account. Because we're looking at salary accounts, we need to make sure from a-- we build the budget up. We look at each salary account, we look at what should it be? You know, is there going to be a step? I mean, we've got to compute every single account, and then you go through all the benefits. Then you look at all the operating accounts, and that's what we've been doing. And the ultimate result is that notebook, and I think that y'all will be able to see-- you'll be able to track and look at detail if you have questions. The calendar itself formatted, the yellow sections are-- reflect board involvement in the budget process. And if you look at the first yellow section, April 20th, that's today. And today is just a day for presenting initially the information for you to start looking at. On May 10th, we have another session to talk about the budget. We have scheduled a tentative adoption of the budget on May 10th, but that doesn't mean that the budget can't be changed. Also, the calendar in any year, if the board desires more meetings, we can have more meetings. Is that the pleasure of the board? We also have another meeting scheduled for May 18th, as you go down the list, to talk about the tentative budget. We have two public hearings on the budget. We have on June 14th, a scheduled legal adoption of the budget on June 14th. And then at the bottom of the calendar, we talk about looking at the digest. And we don't get the digest information until the last week in June. So we're dealing with estimates. And we do have a pretty good handle on estimates, but it can change. And sometimes trends don't always follow trends. So we're waiting on that information. But we'll have to have, because the digest grows, we're going to have three public hearings on the digest, and then the board will vote, as you all know, about setting the millage rate on July 20th. So that's a quick review of the budget. Again, if we need more time to look at information or you have questions, we're going to be responsive to that. My next item is your budget summary that you have at your desk. And I'd like to make some comments about the budget summary prior to going down the list. In today's board meeting, the agenda included discussions on the International Academy of Smyrna. And based on our planning and comments today, we have included or tried to include the potential impact that that might have for consideration in the board included in the budget. There are many considerations that we have with the budget each year as we develop a professional budget. And some of these considerations are as follows. Number one, the budget must be balanced. The superintendent has the responsibility to present a balanced budget to the board for your consideration. The definition of balance means that revenue appropriations must equal or exceed proposed expenditure appropriations. In other words, money coming in must equal or exceed money going out. Number two, much of the budget is based on estimates for revenue. We have a long history of working with our two main sources of revenue, state QBE revenue and local property taxes. In order to calculate these estimates, it's important to take into consideration long-term trends, prior-year experiences, and any current-year information which can influence our own calculations. Professional estimates are key in that if we are even off by 1%, and this is something that's just the burden we bear, but if we're even off by 1%, the impact of that is approximately $18 million. So obviously, we take these estimates very seriously. Number three, as the budget's developed, we must understand the difference between recurring revenue and one-time revenue. Recurring revenue is a revenue type that is constant from year to year, like a salary. If you're going to keep doing the salary, that's revenue that would be reported every year to fund that salary. One-time revenue is a finite amount. It's kind of like your savings account that you have in your personal account. And when it's used up, it's used up. And it's very, very important to recognize and keep sight of what those two different revenue types are. Best budget practices show that any recurring budget item must be reported by recurring revenue, which seems obvious, but it's difficult. One-time expenditures can be supported by either one-time or recurring revenue. This revenue distinction is as critical as we prepare this budget. Per board policy and budget professional financial practices, our equity side of the balance sheet is composed of fund balance. And we continually strive to maintain an unassigned fund balance of one-month reserve or 30 days. And in conversations we had previously, and even today, you can understand the importance of fund balance reserve, because that is how we pay our bills, that's how we meet our daily expenditures, and that's how we have some type of emergency funding. Put in other terms, it's 1/12 of the expenditure budget. Put in other terms, it's 8.33% of operating expenditures. Without exception, all financial experts, including Moody's Investor Service, all financial institutions, consultants, provide guidance that the importance of one to two months unassigned reserve to provide for these emergency and daily operations. In the most recent audit dated June 30th of 2016 for the Cobb County School District, the unassigned fund balance has decreased and is down now to $74,840,000. That's approximately 7.9 or 8% of expenditures, but it is in range of one-month reserve. And you know, the one-month reserve target is 8.33. So that's a cautionary piece of data. It is my recommendation that this unassigned fund balance be maintained and not decreased any further. And I think that the budget we're going to present today will keep us at the one-month reserve and get us for sure to the 8.33% target. The next item is administration's priority as we prepare the budget, that we focus on resources on those that teach and also those that support those who teach. The entire team is important so that our students will experience success. Next item, whenever we have discussions on the budget, we frequently talk about the term lapse. The definition of lapse is overcollected revenue compared to the budget and underspent expenditures compared to the budget. As the board has heard throughout the year, as we have presented quarterly financial reports, it is very evident that the budget has very little lapse left in the figures. In other words, we have estimated revenue and expenditures much more closely, but this has resulted in some additional funds in the last few years to provide much-needed employee benefits. On the other side of the discussion, this also means that we have much less room for revenue and expenditure estimate error. Finance continues to monitor our expenditures as in previous years, and as evidence of this, the most recent quarterly financial report that I think I presented in February, 50% of the way through the year, we were exactly 50% spent on actual expenditure. So we were right on it. And our estimates continue to be right on it. Still makes me nervous, it's pretty close, but there is not much lapse left to add to the budget. Next item, the district has continued to experience a revenue stream challenge, and this revenue challenge has been present for many years. I think Mr. Ragsdale has alluded to this. Included in our state revenue are the continuation of the local fair share calculation for 2018, which is $144.5 million. And that represents an increase for next year of almost $8 million. That's a big hit. In addition to this, the state Georgia has continued their austerity cuts in 2018. It seems interesting that the state has continued to apply austerity cuts to us, but believe it or not, in our state funding, we still maintain an austerity cut from the state of $10.3 million. Our local property tax revenue is currently estimated to be approximately 6% growth over the prior year, but this growth will be mitigated somewhat by exemptions. And we still don't have that exemption inspiration, and when we get that, we'll report it to Okay, next is the budget overview, and it's the sheet that you have at your desk. As in previous years, the budget summary overview is compiled to incrementally track how the budget is proposed to be changed, starting with the preceding FY 2017 fiscal year. So on this report, we begin with the first row with the board-approved current-year 2017 budget that the board approved last May in 2016, where we have $976 million in revenue appropriations and $986 million in expenditure appropriations, and the board-approved use of $10 million in total fund balance for the current fiscal year. So that's the first row. On the next row, the board, it's noted that the board approved $7.1 million in changes to the FY 2017 budget during the current year. These changes included $4 million in additional instructional and support personnel, $1.2 million for property, and $1.9 million for property at Favor Road. These changes did not impact the revenue figure of $976 million, but did revise the expenditure budget from $986 million to $993.2 million. On the next row, beginning in the yellow box area in the top left, we begin construction of the 2018 budget using the revised 2017 budget totals, where we have $976 million in revenue and $993.2 million in expenditures. So let me go over the four revenue changes that we're listing on the report. So item number one, we have additional property tax revenue as a result of 6% digest growth for a total local revenue increase of $21.4 million. Item two, we have a decrease in auto-tag/tavid revenue of $4.6 million. Let me just comment a little bit on that. As you know, in car tags, there's two sources of revenue for car tags. The birthday tax was continued on current vehicles owed, owned. But also now, when you buy a vehicle, either new or used, you pay a title fee instead. So what we try to do in the budget is we look at both of those and try to determine the impact of what that's going to be. We have started to see a significant decline in the birthday tax. That may be a good sign in the economy, because people are buying cars. So that means they're getting rid of their old cars where they were paying birthday tax. But at any rate, the birthday tax is declining, and then we're trying to represent and reflect that decrease. Item number three, we have the state increase in QBE formula earnings. And the earnings there are $24,990,000. And there, I've already alluded to some of the impact of that. We did get growth funding from the state. We got training and experience funding from the state. We got TRS funding from the state, where they are increasing the percentage from 14.27% to 16.81%. We got pupil transportation money, and we had the $8 million increase or decrease in local fair share. So when you tally all those numbers up together, it's $24,990,356. The next item is where we took a look at all the other local revenue sources that we have in the general fund. And there's a lot of them. There's things like delinquent property tax, intangible tax, real estate transfer tax, alcoholic beverage revenue, liquor-by-the-drink, interest income, local revenue, cell towers, sale of assets, a whole range of extra revenues that are in addition to the main sources of revenues we've had. And what we did was we took a look at all those revenues, and we said, how are those revenues going to change for next year? And we looked at the trends, we looked at experience, we tried to get information on each one of those. And what we came up with is that we think that those, all those extra local revenues will give us $5.5 million in extra local revenue. Okay. The next item is a listing of the expenditure changes, and that's line item number five. In line item number five, we track, and again, this is why I reference one-time expenses versus recurring expenses. We don't want any budget errors, and we're trying to make this as accurate as possible. So when we see that we have one-time expenses in the prior year, we do not continue those in the next year, because we don't need to. And so that makes us be more accurate. And here, you can see the land purchases that won't reoccur the next year. So we reflect that in the budget. The next item is number six, is the operating cost to open new schools. And in this particular one, we provide assistance to new schools that are opening or assist those that had construction, and we're listing $861,000 to assist and extra days to assist those schools. The next item is number seven, salary/benefit changes, and we're listing an increase of $25 million. A detail of that $25 million is things for things like salary step for all eligible employees, increase in employer portion of TRS, an increase in non-certified health insurance. And so that's the tally for that item. The next item is number eight, allotment adjustments. In this particular item, we have tried to take into account the impact of the international academy-- In this particular item, we have tried to take into account the impact of the International Academy of Smyrna to include thirty teachers to absorb charter students and one extra position that's called PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Position. We put that into the budget. The next item, number nine, is several expenditure adjustments that we have where we true-up expenditure categories. We have listed things like utilities, where we look at the utilities account and try to true it up to what we think it's going to be. We have an analysis of how we might transfer funds to other, out of the general fund into our other funds, an adjustment for that. We've made adjustments to the cell tower account based on the schedule. We know what revenue we're going to get when for all the cell towers that are located on school district property. We have represented a conversion of some ISS teachers to pair pros, and we've also made an adjustment in our state of Georgia twenty additional day funding. The next item, and I will say that, if I stop there after talking about revenue changes and expenditure changes, I have listed as a subtotal, so our expenditure, our revenue total now would be one-billion, oh-twenty-three, three-ninety-nine, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. And our expenditure total would be one-billion, oh-eighteen, three-seventy-nine, five-hundred-and-twenty. So at this point, in the budget, we have a structural budget. And the reason I listed this is we're talking about recurring revenues and recurring expenditures. I kept the bonus listed as a separate item because that's, that's not a recurring item. So for recurring revenue and recurring expenditures, we have what we call a structural budget, where basically you would hear people say, we're living within our means, and that's a good thing. With the one-time-one bonus, it puts us a little bit below, but the cost of a one-point-one percent bonus for all employees would be eight-million, one-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars. That is a brief summary of where we are in the budget so far. We also have in your notebook various tabs for every one of the other funds, and then a summary sheet for the other funds. Each of these funds are budgeted as separate so that each program can be managed and the funds tracked. And so you can look at that summary report at your convenience, at your pleasure, and... Mr. Chair, that is my initial presentation.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I just want to, I know I'm reiterating this, but I think it stands to say a couple of times. Two things that I want to draw attention to in, on this sheet here about the budget. One is a TRS employer portion increase, fourteen-point-two-seven to sixteen-point-eight-one. That's obviously an over-two-percent increase, that that is incurring to every district in the state for TRS. That's one of those things that our employees never see, but it, it obviously has a significant impact on our budget. They, the employees will be able to see that, though, in the total compensation statement, should they access that electronically so they can see how much we're paying on behalf of their benefits. Secondly, and also related, the next line item, non-certified health insurance increase from eight-forty-six-twenty to nine-forty-five. Again, if you'll recall, this started three years ago, when the state decided they were going to take out immediately all classified employees from the state health benefit plan. Well, obviously, that would be all bus drivers, food service workers, technology, maintenance, finance, anybody basically non-certified. So that being said, I want to reiterate again, because most of the, our viewing population and employees also do not know, this has accounted for to date thirteen-million dollars out of our budget on a total accrued basis, but now moving forward recurring basis. So the first time it was five, the next time it was five, an additional five, and now it's up to thirteen-million dollars. So obviously, that's a significant impact when you're looking at, the bonus down below is eight-point-one-million. So to be able to do a raise, to put that in the budget, obviously, the, the classified health insurance that the state has so, took it upon itself to push down to us, that's having a significant impact on, on our funding. And, and as Brad mentioned, Cobb is unique. We have some exemptions that make it very attractive for people to live in this county, and we're not saying anything like we need to change those exemptions, but it's just, again, it's an educational matter that everybody needs to understand what impact those exemptions have on the funding of the school district. So, and I will also go ahead and make the link, even though it's not, not necessarily included, but Splosted is the only salvation that we as a school district have to escape the negative impact of these exemptions and, and the role that they play in our funding. So we're able to survive in a budget, and again, it's just as I started out by saying, I told the principals as well, we're not going to have a happy budget meeting time in the near future until we do something, and, and not that we can do anything. I mean, the only thing that the board could do is raise the millage rate by one-point-one mils, and that is not, you know, worth the blood that we would lose for, number one, me to recommend it, and number two, me to ask you to, to vote for that, which we're not doing. And I might also say, and I might also say that throughout the budget crisis years, over the past eight years, the board, and I applaud the board for this, has not even entertained raising the millage rate as a point of discussion. So again, aside from millage rate, there has to be something other created to, to help with the revenue. And that's not something that we can do by ourselves. It's going to take the help of the community, it's going to take the help of the legislature, it's going to take the help of the delegation, and we're not ready to even start talking about what that might look like because we really don't know. But all of that to say, it puts us in a difficult position each and every year when it comes time to start the budget conversations because we want to do things, and, and again, two years ago, when we did the four-and-a-half, the four-percent raise minimal, and then last year when we did the two-and-a-half-percent raise. We want to continue to do those things, but unfortunately, our revenue does not allow us to do that this year. Again, I was committed to, to being employee-centric, and the, the one-point-one percent bonus, it, it is the same as a one-point-one percent raise in the sense of you're going to get that money, but it, it is a bonus. So you're going to get it one time instead of spread out over twelve months. Can we do that again next year? We really don't know, because again, there's, there's too many unknowns in this process. So again, what is consolidated down to one eleven-by-seventeen, because that's the only kind of paper that Brad will buy, is what, what looks like to be a pretty simple budget when you look at it. But let me tell you, there was a lot of blood, sweat and tears that went into this because obviously, there are no new programs in here, there are no new employees in here except for what, what he mentioned about the, about the one, the PBIS coach and some various other things that are very minimal. So it's not like we're able to enhance anything. We're not able to enhance the teacher pool or, or the number of teachers we have in classrooms because we're still down about nine-hundred teachers, give or take, from the first time that we had to start cutting back eight years ago. So all that to say, again, a one-page budget that is very easy to understand, but there is a lot of complexity and a lot of pain that went into this creation. So again, I hope that helps, and I know I restated some things, but, but again, I think it's very important for everybody, especially our employees, to, to understand those points. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And now to kick off the discussion is Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we may be a while. To carry up on some of the conversation that Superintendent just gave, there's basically three situations we could look at. One is find cost savings internally in all our different programs. The second one is to get the legislators to change some things in, in the law that would give us additional funding. That's very difficult. And as you mentioned earlier, one of the things would be to raise our millage rate, which is not something we're probably going, going to do. And the third thing is to come up with another source of funding, which, you know, may happen and may not. But I want to focus on the internal possibilities. I'm concerned about, or would like to know, what amount of money do we spend on special needs? Because we have a lot of different programs, as you mentioned earlier, it's, you know, teacher-pupil ratios can go all over the board. So I would like to say next month, if it's possible, to have a breakdown of what programs we have, how much money is being allocated in the budget for those programs, and analysis of, can, are we doing it the most efficient way to, to maximize our revenue? Now, let me bring up another area that I'm, have become a little bit concerned about. This is a result of my wife, the princess, making me aware of something. I, I knew about it, but I didn't know anything much about it, and that's dyslexia. Evidently, that's a, a problem for a large number of students. We even have a school, a private school at Piedmont Baptist Church called Grace Point that people spend tens of thousands of dollars to take, you know, have their children go there because of this condition. My concern is, okay, the princess gave me a, a percentage of how many of our students may be, may have this condition. And she said twenty percent. That's twenty-three-thousand students. Now, I think that's pretty high, but even if it's ten percent, that's thirteen-thousand, eleven-thousand. So it's a big number, but it gets smaller when you start breaking it down by number of classrooms we have. Now, my concern is, let's say that twenty percent is a good number, and you've got a classroom of twenty-five students. That's five students in there with this condition. Now, it's not their fault that they have to learn a different way, but my, several questions come to my mind is, can a teacher recognize it? Do we have enough training for our teachers to recognize that this is a condition that the parents need to be aware of? And if, if a teacher can't recognize it, how much emphasis are they giving to that child in the classroom that's taking away from the other eighty percent? So we're having a, we're having a financial impact that's going to have to show up somewhere in the budget, and it also is going to show up in our academic numbers, but because if it's already there, it's that high percentage, it's already showing, we just don't recognize it, we don't break it apart. So I'm hoping the superintendent will come by, say, next month, and give us some insight as to, you know, what, you know, what, what are we doing for our special needs programs? How much money are we actually spending so that we have a clear picture of what we're offering to, to the community? Because I think we offer more than probably any other community in the metropolitan area. I mean, we, we, we have amazing special need programs, and I'll give you an example, like Pope has a transition school. There's probably twenty or thirty people in there, you know, they could stay in there until twenty-two. Some of those kids work, but some of them can't, some of them work in the school itself, but that, that's a cost. That's the financial impact, and we're, we're paying for it, the community is paying for it, so...
Mr. Banks, if I can, let me, let me respond to a couple of different things. First is, the breakdown of every program is right there. So it, it will take maybe some, some questioning from, from Brad, one-on-one, perhaps individually, but every account is broken down in that budget notebook. So every single program is broken, broken out, and you can see exactly how much is spent on each one. Now, taking it a step further, I'll answer your question with, there are, there is nothing that can be said is perfect and doesn't need to be improved. So, but I will tell you, the answer is yes, we are continually analyzing our programs and how we do what we do to make sure that we're doing it in the most efficient manner possible. Now, I'll also go and say, I'm about to tag in Mary Elizabeth about who we have and, and how they are able to detect dyslexia, for example, which is just one of, of many of our, our students with special needs categories. But one of the things that we have put in and we're rolling out district-wide, which is, will be through by December of this year, is CTLS. And that may, that answer may shock you a little bit, but the reasoning behind that is, the reasoning behind my answer to that is because ultimately, the, the goal of CTLS as a tool is to be able to allow every single teacher we have in every single classroom to identify individually by student where those students' weaknesses are and need to be addressed so that different things can be identified. Now, as far as drilling down into the weeds into dyslexia, for example, I'll, I'll let Mary Elizabeth kind of speak to who we have, what programs we have, and, and what training is conducted.
Let me start by just some basic context for the conversation. We actually just tipped over the fifteen-thousand mark for the number of students served in special education in Cobb County schools. So a little more than fifteen-thousand out of our one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand students served in special education. The topic of dyslexia has generated quite a bit of discussion publicly because it, it benefits from some very intensive instructional programs. But I do want to clarify that our school psychologists are not qualified to identify dyslexia as a specific form of a learning disability. Dyslexia is actually identified by external, non-school-based professionals in the field. In recent decades, this is not entirely new, but the concept of dyslexia is so broad-sweeping that there are varying ranges of decoding skills, for reading skills, that it, it doesn't benefit from a one-size-fits-all response. So what we are currently doing, not just for those with an outside professional's identification of dyslexia, but for all students identified with a learning disability specifically in reading in Cobb County schools, is that we have, first of all, during Mr. Ragsdale's superintendency, we have eliminated the redundancy of school-only purchased intervention materials. And we have pulled back in order to make a systematic decision about how we will identify reading proficiency, and this is for all students. Students who are unsuccessful on that reading proficiency are then given further evaluation metrics and eventually referred to special education psychologists for an evaluation. But all students who struggle with reading have access to intervention resources, and we have actually fully funded System forty-four and Read one-eighty as part of our commitment to the reading diagnostic. And next year, we'll have one-hundred-and-six schools with that reading intervention tool available for all students. As reading disabilities get more intense, then there are more intense programs to provide. So, for example, all of our special education instructional coaches are trained in Norton-Gillingham. Norton-Gillingham is a very prominently recognized program for intervening for students with dyslexia. But it is incredibly... But it is incredibly comprehensively expensive, beyond the scope of a budget that a school system is capable of dedicating. But by having trained instructional coaches who have subsequently provided training of Norton Gillingham techniques to our, our student support administrators, and then to teachers, we are able to leverage some of the very same instructional techniques that an Norton Gillingham facility, dedicated facility would leverage. Now, I will also add that once qualifying for special education, there are additional programs that students have access to. We have been undergoing a very rigorous evaluation of the effectiveness of those programs, so I can't speak to each one of them in this moment, but I hope to be able to lay out for you, one, that Mr. Ragsdale and under his leadership has had a commitment to reading proficiency. Two, we have implemented a diagnostic for every single child to determine where we, where we stand. And then, three, we have eliminated the redundancy of programs that had been in place and replaced it with systematic programs, right now, System 44 and Read 180. Should those still be ineffective for a student who has been qualified for special education? Then there are more intensive programs available in our schools beyond that. I do want to acknowledge that it was not in the very distant past that we were not systematic enough when it comes to the reading proficiency of every child, and we have been dedicated to no other cause more greatly than, than improving that. I'll pause, see if there's any questions from that.
So, where do you see us as far as, say, on a scale of 1 to 10, as far as being able to recognize and address in the classroom from a teacher standpoint? And what, what do you see as, as a future financial and academic process, impact?
So my judgment would offer that, as is required by law, we have a response to intervention process. All students are evaluated based on their learning every day, and then, as soon as learning deficiencies are determined, there are school teams designed to, to intensify the support students receive. I, I would, we have 114 schools, and we are certainly all at different capacities of doing that effectively, but we simultaneously have an exceptionally impressive collection of school psychologists who are very credible in their identification of special education needs beyond that.
Okay.
Can I add something to, to what Dr. Davis said? Keeping in mind that the school district has the obligation to provide a free and appropriate public education, what is called FAP, and, and that is what I would see as an absolute obligation, so we've got to be cautious in, we, we can't characterize this as a budget issue or a budget item to say, here's a bucket. That's something that, and in board presentations in the past, there are teams of professionals who are dedicated to that. It's a very complicated area, so I just wanted to, for purposes of this discussion, add in that component to it.
But there is a budget impact.
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get to, you know, how big is this impact? I don't know. I don't know of anybody. Let me move on. The other two items, areas I'll address later on, but some questions for Mr. Johnson. Item number one, where you have the 6% digest growth, last year, we had a 6% digest growth, and then it actually turned out to be, the assessment was 8.5%. So now, is this 6% over or above the 6% of last year, or 8.5% of that actual, was actual last year?
This is 6% incrementally more than last year.
Which, which number of last year?
Well, I don't have last year's with me, but last year, the digest growth was something in the range of 7.7%. But then, when we got the exemptions, we stayed with our 6% estimate, because the exemptions, specifically age 62 and over exemptions, went from 78 million to 90 million, so it impacted our budget a great deal.
Well, the 6% already had, the exemptions already built into it, so if we increase it by 2.5%, there should be, there should be additional money, which I think, if I understand it correctly, and four, no, it's not four.
Well, Mr. Banks, let me clarify, last year.
Okay.
Last year, I believe, and this is from memory, but the gross digest increase was about 7.7%, but when the, when the exemptions kicked into place, the net growth, gross was 6%.
Yep.
And so that's why we went ahead and went with a 6% this year, because it seems like trends and experience, that would be a reasonable starting point.
Well, and the budget we approved last year was for 6%. That was the number. That's what we approved.
And that was a net of exemptions?
Of, of what we thought the digest was. It was 6% growth, but we actually had 8.5%.
Well, we initially, and we initially estimated 7.7, which is almost 8.
Well, that didn't show up in the documentation you gave last year. That was, what you gave us last year was 6%.
Well, that's, I, I can't remember exactly what was in the notebook, but the digest, gross digest growth was 7.7, and when you took into account the, the impact of the exemptions, it made the growth go down because we're not going to get that money.
Okay.
And so, starting with 6% this year, it, it could be that 6% is too high.
Yeah.
Because I don't have the total exemption figure so far, but I'm thinking that 6% might be in the target because that was similar to last year, assuming exemptions don't increase even further.
Okay, so you're saying 6%, 6% growth in our assessed values for last, for this year?
Right, and that's per the Cobb County tax assessment.
Right, so, you know, the 6% is actually asset property values, and that's, that's where, that's where we get our 6% growth.
What concerns me is, is the 6% is really gross.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm hoping that there's not a big increase in exemptions.
Okay, now, item number two, I'm confused about the sales tax and, and the fee, car fee. We're taking, we estimated, when we had a sales tax, about, what, $12 million per year of sales tax? So now...
It started out as that.
Okay.
But that was years ago.
So now, when, we don't have that, or do we have part of that sales tax still coming into splosh, or is that zero now?
The, yeah, that's going into splosh now, but right now, when you talk about tag and TAVID, let me make sure, let me, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Right now, we have a title tax.
Right.
A title fee, actually.
Right.
So when you buy a new car, or you buy a new used car.
Yeah.
You have to pay that title fee upfront.
Yeah.
That's what we're depending on more and more. That appears to be fairly stable, but what's decreasing is TAVID, which is the, well, I'm sorry, the birthday tax. And the birthday tax, when people buy new cars, they get rid of their old car that they were paying birthday tax on, tag tax, and now they're paying the title fee. So that birthday tax is going down and down and down, and so, we did experience extra tag revenue along with the birthday tax initially, when the title fee was enacted.
Okay.
But now, it's slowly decreasing to reflect that birthday tax decrease. We might experience a little bit more decline. I, I'm trying to think of the number off the top of my head, but the, the tag and TAVID tax got up as high as 43 million, but now it's coming down a little bit, and we're thinking it's going to be around 38 now. So, we don't think it'll go down much more, but we have to reflect that decline in the fact that people are selling their cars, and we're just not going to get that birthday tax anymore.
So eventually, we'll go down to zero?
Well, this revenue item is interesting, because from a budget standpoint, I'd rather have the birthday tax, because I know I'm going to get that.
Yeah.
But in the next economic downturn, when people stop buying cars, there won't be title fee, and this revenue item could go down substantially.
Okay.
And so, you know, whenever that cycle comes, and it will, there'll be, there'll be a down cycle, that's going to be another budget challenge, probably four or five years from now, or whenever the cycle occurs.
Let me go to item number seven. Do we have any funds in there for nurses who are not on step increases?
No, we do not.
Is there a reason why we don't? What do we, what do we do? How, how are we compensating them for, for some reason, we don't have them on step increases?
That, that is a subject for budget discussion.
Okay.
The, Mr. Banks, they're included in the 1.1% bonus, and if you reflect back to, I'm going to have to have some help with my memory, I don't remember which year it was, but we did address.
Yeah, pull out.
The nurses, both RN and LPN, to bring them in line with market.
Okay.
So we adjusted both those positions, because they are not on step increases, but we did adjust those, and we periodically do a review on those, because they're not on step, as, as we just said. But they are in line with market, and, and we will do that analysis as, as we can.
Okay, well, my contention is, why aren't they on step increases? You know, because there's not that many of them.
It would be a pretty significant cost to do that, because I know in, in previous years, before my time, it was looked at, and it was, I want to, I don't know, anyway, I can't, I can't remember the number, but it was a significant cost impact to do that exercise.
My, my, my feeling is they should be, but we'll discuss it in further detail. QBE, we, we're getting $24 million, almost, almost $25 million more dollars than we got last year from QBE. So what happened? How did that happen?
Well...
That's a huge number from what we, what has been happening in the past.
I mean, I'd have to look at the growth from previous year, but that is made up of several things. Student growth, we get money in the QBE formula for student growth, we get additional money for training and experience, we get money for pupil transportation, and things like that.
Okay.
And keep in mind, there, there's also still $10 million in austerity cuts, so there should be 10 million more in that number that we should be getting.
I agree, but, but this is a, this is a big change, which, you know, helps us, I mean, we, we need more. Before I finalize, let me take this opportunity to thank Mr. Johnson for preparing this budget. I know it's a lot of work, and I would ask that he bring his staff forward and introduce them.
Absolutely.
Because they're the ones that do the work.
I'll just ask them to come up and introduce themselves, because they need to see the podium. I'm David Baker, I'm a budget manager.
Becky Beck, I'm also the budget manager.
I'm Mandy Wissing, I'm the budget director.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Scamhorn, and may I just say, it's 5:25.
Okay, I'm going to make this real short, about 17 inches. What happened to this year's more brief layout that's usually formatted like this, you know? You know, it has the revenues and expenditures, it's a little more outlined. We used to get two sheets, this sheet and the other sheet. Are we going to get the other sheet?
There's a detailed list of the whole overview in your notebook.
Okay.
And on every line item, there is a tab, and it shows how everything was computed. For the purposes of this meeting today, we prepared this executive summary for you all, but know that there's a lot of detail in this.
But you, and I'll bring the last five years if you need me to, but you, you know the sheet I'm talking about.
I do, and it's in those notebooks.
And it's in there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not talking about each tab, you know, having their own...
No, there's, there's a, there's a detailed overview in that notebook.
Okay.
And there's a tab with each row.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Scamhorn. Ms. Thayer? Did you hear anything? All right, but...
No, but since you want me to comment, I will say, thank you, front row, for being color-coordinated.
Yeah, okay.
That's a very nice, thank you. Brad, thank you, good presentation.
Anyone to my left have anything they'd like to say, questions? Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Sweeney?
Mr. Johnson, great job, as usual, and thank you very much. Really, I want to bring something that the superintendent had brought up. He had mentioned that we are still about 900 teachers shy, and that would be from the ratios, I presume, about 2008, circa 2009, correct?
Correct.
And we've heard you before talk about the average cost, and again, fully loaded costs, salaries, benefits, taxes, and everything for a teacher being about $75,000 annually. I'm sure that number's going up a little bit.
Actually, it's about 85.
Okay, I'm just going to use the lower number for discussion purposes.
Okay.
Just to, you know, share with people, 900, 900 teaching positions at that lower $75,000 number, that equates to $67,500,000, okay, in revenue. And I've done some backward numbers here, applying the millage rate, as well as the 40% valuation on homes, and what the tax digest would have to grow, and divided by the median home cost in Cobb County, just on residential homes, and this would be non-exempt homes, that would be 32,000 housing starts. 32,000 housing starts at the, at the median home price to generate that level of revenue. So it's not happening next year.
No.
Nor the year after. You know, earlier, you know, you had shared, you know, the comment during an earlier presentation, I think you had, you had shared, you know, potentially one step short from disaster, something to that effect. And the thing is, is that Mr. Johnson brings up some incredibly valid points. If there's a downturn in the economy with as tight as this budget is, you know, we have got some substantial headwinds within that regard. I think for the foreseeable future, you're looking at the current teacher-student ratios. Is that a pretty safe assessment to say?
Yes.
And, you know, the thing is, is I know that each and every other board, each board member up here is committed to trying to see what they can do to help reduce class sizes, and I just don't see that happening in the near future, the unfortunate thing. The other thing I want to share is, we have heard that the, you know, there's potential for a revisiting on the QBE formula, and the concerns that I've expressed in the past are still very, very true today, is that in the event there's a revision on the QBE formula, my feeling is that it will not work to the benefit of Cobb County. The legislators are not in the habit of voting themselves less money, and there's a lot more legislators that are outside this area, and as, as such, a future, a future change in this is not likely to benefit Cobb. And then, the other thing that you cited, I think, with regard to the economy, if there is a downturn specifically with the car taxes and the way those are handled, that's a significant risk for the district going forward. Overall, I'm very pleased with the numbers and everything that you've put there. The last thing that I want to share, and the superintendent has talked about this, is that while the state is suggesting that there's going to, well, I shouldn't say suggesting, while the state has allocated a 2% increase as far as the salary budget for teachers is concerned, because of the supplement that we add on top of that, it's, we can't get to a full 2% raise. And the thing is, is it's characterized, you know, by the, the... And, um, the thing is, is it's characterized, you know, by the, the state level is that, you know, teachers across the state are going to get a 2% raise. But, um, unfortunately, the resources, the financial resources we have are inadequate to do so. Is that an accurate statement?
That's true. And what you just said, there's a lot of school districts in Georgia, I think there's 180 of them, they pay what the state salary scale is.
Right.
So in metro Atlanta, we're very fortunate to have these types of supplements that range from 20 to 27% above is significantly more than a lot of school districts in our sister school districts across the state.
Yes. The thing that, you know, and I think this is where, um, our, our constituents really need, uh, you know, have, uh, you know, I'd say very frank discussions, um, with our Cobb County delegation. Uh, and the thing is, is that, um, Cobb County, um, does not receive equalization funding. You know, on the, the, um, our, the largest school system in, in the state receives, uh, substantial equalization funding. They're dollars, uh, and I've just looked at their budget, it's increased to $81 million. $81 million in the current, uh, budget. Gwinnett County ranks 91st out of 180 counties, uh, as far as property wealth per, on a per student basis. Um, we've always advocated for in our legislative priorities that the, um, equalization, excuse me, that there be a cap as far as the local fair share contribution is concerned, um, because we do contribute obviously a very substantial amount, that five mils. But, um, you know, we're not on an equal footing as far as the revenue that we're receiving. And I think it's time that our legislators, um, collectively start to make the point that, listen, you know, in order to get some of this legislation that the, you know, certain individuals want done at the Gold Dome, they're going to have to get through Cobb County in order to get it done. Thank you.
And my add, since you brought this up, local fair share, this year is forecasted to increase $8 million to $144 million that we're not receiving.
Ms. Thayer?
One quick question. Um, Mr. Exel, I know you meet frequently with other superintendents and, and talk back and forth. Do you have any indication what other large metro systems are going to do about teacher raises or any idea of what they're thinking?
You know, it, it really varies. Um, I don't have data on large districts. Um, I do keep in touch with, with other metro Atlanta districts that are not, um, as big and it ranges. Some are going to be able to do, um, a two and, two to two and a half percent raise. Some are going to be able to do that because they receive equalization. Um, so again, going back to Mr. Sweeney's point about equalization and local fair share, um, you know, we're, we're not receiving a single penny of equalization. And as we've already discussed, we have significant impacts from, from our local exemptions, which it is what it is, we have to deal with it. But it stands to say again, that we're not able to do, um, a raise because of these very important and deeply impacting, uh, items that we have against us, um, for lack of a better term. Because, and, and I'll go ahead and give you a glimpse into this, um, one of the things that I'm going to work on to your point, Mr. Sweeney, is on the local fair share. If we're going to call it local fair share, then how about let's get taxed not on our gross, that includes all of the exemptions that we don't receive. So that local fair share assessment to the Cobb County School District is not five mils. It equates to about six and a half mils.
Right.
So that's going to be one of my recommendations for next year's legislative priorities is, okay, if you're not going to be interested at all in having a cap on local fair share, which we have said for hump team years with absolutely no traction, and Mr. Scamhorn was greeted with that from one of the delegates, um, at our, um, open house that, that we hosted at one of our high schools. So i- if, if that's going to be the case, then hopefully we can garner some attention and traction on, okay, can we at least get the concept of taxing us on what we actually receive? Assess the five mil on the five mil. If the board chose to raise the millage rate to the max of 20 mils, okay? We're not going to say, oh, wait a minute, we need to, we need that millage rate to be assessed on everything that we're supposed to get. No, the millage rate would be assessed on what we actually get. So, you know, it goes both ways.
But my concern is just, I know we have worked to, to be at or, or near, at, at least comparable to the, the school systems we compete with for the, the best teachers. And we're trying to stay in that loop and just missing one year of not being at that level makes it harder in the next years to keep up with that.
It, it does, but I will say that because we have the, the range of 20 to 27% above the state salary schedule, we're not going to lose as much because we still have that that we pay above the state salary schedule. But I totally agree with your point because if, if we're not able to do a raise, even though technically speaking, you could say the 1.1% bonus equates to being paid that year as if you got a 1.1% raise because it's going to be attributed to the salary you receive after you get the step.
Right.
So you're going to get your step July 1 and then come December paycheck, you're going to get a 1.1% bonus calculated on your current salary. So, so it's not as good as I would like it, granted, but it could be much worse.
It's just going to make it harder the next year.
Exactly.
To still compete for those good teachers.
That's exactly right. So we will bring you, um, an analysis, just like we did when we were touting, you know, the 4% and the two and a half percent, that we were able to get to the number one spot for school districts paying, um, teachers with 10 years' experience and a master's degree, which technically should be the sweet spot for teachers as far as experience goes. Um, we're, we're the number one currently. So after July 1, we, we need to do a reassessment of that to see, to your point, how much, how much ground we did lose and what we can do to make up that ground.
Did you, and I know we need to close, but did you, I know you must have with your staff done some figuring on what it would have cost the system to do the 2%. Can any of that be shared with the board at some point?
No, I, I can share it with you now. Um, to do a 2% across the board pay raise is over $16 million. Um, so it would be another 8 million, give or take, 7.8 to 8 million, 8.1 additionally to do a 2%. Because in this year's budget, the cost of that is the same as a raise. It's just next year's budget would have to extrapolate that out because it's, the raise would be rolled in.
Right.
So we may, and again, I don't know what we can do next year. Hopefully we can do much better, but, um, to, to answer your question, it would be another 7.8 to 8.1 million dollars to, to do a 2%.
Mr. Superintendent, I just had, uh, one comment on that, too. Some information is starting to trickle in on Tuesday in the paper. DeKalb County Schools reported that they're considering no raises. It's in the paper as of Tuesday. So some are, can do some things, some can't.
Mr. Sweeney, what did you say?
Should be, should be the last question for me. Um, the, um, and you may have said this already and if you did, I apologize. Um, the 2% from the state, is that going, is that one-time money or is that going into the salary schedule?
That's recurring money going in.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I think we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, and this is the time to make sure you have your consent agenda items or discussion items in order and, and then vote to approve the agenda or else do the agenda with, without objection.
All right. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Sweeney will go down the list.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have, uh, the following items as consent agenda items. That would be, um, board agenda item number one, uh, board agenda item number four and board agenda item number five. And the balance of those would all be discussion items.
Okay. All right. So without objection, the agenda is approved and we are in recess to executive session. We'll need a motion to go to executive session.
And it'll be for permitted items, I know, for litigation, for personnel.
Do we have land? No land. Just land, I mean, the personnel.
All right. So do we have a motion that we go into executive session for, all right, Ms. Thayer, motion, ran by Mr. Scamhorn, seconds. Everyone in favor, raise your hand. All right. That's it. All right. See everybody at 7.